Well, good morning, everyone. We are going to get started here. And good morning, Ms. Prine. You want to get us going here?
Good morning, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. Welcome to the presentation of the Mayor's Proclamations. We begin with a Pledge of Allegiance. And this morning, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we have David Benya from Candlelighters of El Paso at the invitation of Mayor Renart Johnson. Okay, Ms. Prine, let's take the next proclamation. Yes, sir. And for those of you receiving a proclamation this morning, your group will have up to six minutes collectively to come to the podium and receive the proclamation. The first proclamation is American Legion Eastwood Post 36, 105th Anniversary.
It's okay to clap. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is David Portas. I'm the immediate-
And if you'll allow me to read the proclamation, please. Thank you. The proclamation reads, "Whereas August 10, 2025 marks the 105th anniversary of the American Legion Eastwood Post 36, located in El Paso, Texas, and whereas the American Legion Eastwood Post 36 proudly stands as the oldest American Legion post in El Paso County, reflecting a longstanding tradition of service, patriotism, and dedication to the community by honoring veterans through memorial events, flag retirements, local parades, and patriotic observances. And whereas in celebration of this milestone, the post will host an open house and membership drive on August 9, 2025 in El Paso, Texas, welcoming veterans, families, and community members to participate in honoring its legacy. And whereas the American Legion is a family-oriented organization committed to serving the community with, through local schools, city organizations, charity groups, and promoting leadership, citizenship, and patriotism for the youth through programs such as Boy State, Junior ROTC, and scholarship initiatives. And whereas the Eastwood Post 36 includes proud members who have served in every major conflict in which the United States has been involved, including World War II, the Korean War, the Cold War, the Vietnam War, the conflicts in Grenada and Panama, Operation Desert Storm, the Persian Gulf War, Afghanistan, and the Global War on Terror, now therefore be proclaimed by the Mayor and Council of the City of El Paso honoring the American Legion Eastwood Post 36 on its 105th anniversary and extends its heartfelt appreciation to all post members, past and present, for their unwavering service and sacrifice. We recognize and honor all veterans who have served and continue to serve our nation while solemnly remembering those who made the ultimate sacrifice. And we extend our deepest condolences to their families and loved ones. With enduring gratitude, we commend the strength, perseverance, and commitment of all veterans, both during their time in service and upon returning home, and reaffirm our collective duty to ensure their sacrifices are never forgotten. We encourage all Americans to reflect on the lessons of war, to listen to and honor the voices of our veterans, and to work toward a future guided by compassion, understanding, and peace." Signed by our Honorable Mayor, Renart Johnson.
Thank you. I just wanted to be ahead of our six minutes.
Good morning. There you go.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is David Portas. I'm the immediate First Vice Commander of American Legion Eastwood Post 36, and I'm currently their Social Media Officer. On behalf of over 300 members of the American Legion, we want to thank you for this opportunity and for this special recognition. With me, on the left, we have our Judge Advocate Tammy Say, our Commander Jesús Chui Gander. On my right, we have representatives from the Auxiliary, which is a very important part of our American Legion and helps us tremendously. Ms. Marine is the new incoming president, and you're the vice president, I believe.
Patricio Villalobos.
Parliamentarian, and they're also part of our American Legion. Commander Gander is going to speak on behalf of the American Legion, but before I leave the podium, I would like to personally invite all of you to our celebration on Saturday. The doors open at 4:00, and the celebration starts at 4:30. One of the functions that we're going to have is the setting up of the prisoners of war and missing in action table. If you all have never had the opportunity to see this, I encourage you to attend. It is very somber, but a very rewarding setup of the prisoner of war and missing in action table. So on behalf, again, of the American Legion, myself, thank you, Mayor and Council, for this honor. And now I present to you our Commander Jesús Chui Gander. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council members. My name is Chui Gander, and I'm the Commander of American Legion Post 36. The American Legion was founded in 1919 by an act of Congress, is the nation's largest veteran service organization dedicated to advocating for the needs of veterans, service members, and their families. The American Legion was chartered and incorporated by Congress as a patriotic veterans organization devoted to the mutual helpfulness with a commitment to destigating mental health support and preventing veteran suicide. The organization empowers individuals to take action and offers a variety of programs and resources to support military families. Over the past century, the American Legion has made significant contributions to veterans, well-being, exemplified by the record amount of VA disability benefits, secured and robust participation in youth programs. Focusing on service to veterans, service members, and communities, the Legion evolved a group of weary veterans of World War I into one of the most influential nonprofit groups in the United States. Membership swiftly grew to over 1 million. Local posts sprang up across the country. Today, a membership stands over 1.6 million and more than 12,000 posts worldwide. The post organized into 55 departments, one each of the 50 states, along with the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, France, Latin America, and the Philippines. Over the years, the Legion has built its identity by achieving hundreds of benefits and services for veterans supporting armed forces, instilling the values of responsible citizenship among young people. From the nation-changing of American Legion drafted GI Bill to relieve for veterans exposed to toxic contamination in their service, veterans of the American Legion have worked over a century to improve and strengthen the nation they swore with their lives to defend. After World War I, with thousands of veterans nationwide with neuropsychiatric conditions, the American Legion raised awareness to the condition later defined as a post-traumatic stress disorder. The Legion's efforts resulted in the creation of the U.S. Veterans Bureau, forerunner to the Veterans Administration. The Federal Veterans Administration is established in 1930 after tireless lobbying for the American Legion, long promoted by the American Legion National POW MIA Recognition Day, accepted to be recognized annually in the third Friday of September, August 10, 1922. President Joe Biden signed into law the Sergeant First Class Heath Robinson, honoring our promise to address Comprehensive Toxins Act, a historic move strongly supported and promoted by the American Legion, to provide health care for service and disability compensation to some 4 million additional veterans, mostly post-9/11, who were exposed to toxic contamination in the military. On October 1, 1923, American Legion accredited service officers secure what is believed to be an all-time one-year high of VA benefits for disabled veterans with $18.8 billion claims related to the PACT Act account for the $4 billion increase in benefits between 2020 and 2023. The American Legion Post 36 has over 300 members, including the Auxiliary Unit 36, the American Legion Riders Chapter 36, and Sons of the American Legion Squadron 36. All these groups have met here for a variety of outings and events. The Legion sponsors scholarships for Boys and Girls state programs to teach students about U.S. government. Commander Gander, myself, and the entire staff extends a warm welcome to you and invite you to enjoy the atmosphere and events on all patriotic holidays. Our 105th birthday party will be August 9, with ceremonies starting at 4:00 p.m. Food and drinks will be provided, along with speeches from the City of El Paso, State of Texas, and Washington, D.C. dignitaries reading speeches. Music will be provided by Grupo Soss after the meeting. Our location is 3730 Shell. County Commissioner, oops, sorry, sorry, sir. Mayor and commissioners are invited to come out and support us on this special occasion. Thank you very much for this proclamation, sir.
Well, big congratulations to you guys, and thank you for all that you do for the El Paso community and 105th Anniversary is huge. But most importantly, thank you for your service and your dedication to veterans and all of the community support that you do, the scholarships, the ROTC, a number of things that you guys mentioned, because you make our community much better. And with Fort Bliss being here, you know, the Legion is something we certainly need. And, you know, we're celebrating 105th, and I can't wait until we celebrate the next one. So we are standing behind you guys, and from 1919, that is incredible. So congratulations, and we're happy to be celebrating this day with you. Congratulations.
Thank you. The next proclamation is "I Walk Beside You" Day.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, City Councilmen. Thank you.
The proclamation reads, "Whereas Cesarino Stroza, native of South El Paso, Texas, has dedicated his career to public art that inspires positive self-expression and community upliftment, beginning with his first public mural at Bowie High School at the age of 16. And whereas holding an associate's degree in advertising graphics and design from El Paso Community College and pursuing studies in art education at the University of Texas at El Paso and architecture at Texas Tech University, Cesarino Stroza has built a distinguished portfolio of murals that enhance the culture and fabric of El Paso. This includes notable projects such as the Delta Center Complex, the 911 Memorial Column beneath Interstate 10, and Sealing Rotunda Murals in the El Paso State Office Building. And whereas innovating through the integration of sculpted relief and architectural elements, his works include Quez Alcuato at the Child and Adolescent Wellness Center, a series for the City of El Paso Environmental Services Department, Hard Work and Foundations: Cultural Development and Identity, and Payoff and Reward, and sculpted mural series for La Fe Clinics in El Paso Community College. And whereas his participation in the International Mural Conference at the Chamisal National Memorial and presentations at the University of Texas at El Paso alongside esteemed muralists reinforces commitment to large-scale public works. And whereas on August 3, 2019, the City of El Paso endured a tragic mass shooting at a local Walmart resulting in the loss of 23 lives and profound impacts on countless families in the community at large. And whereas as the sixth anniversary of this devastating event approaches, the city seeks to honor the memory of the victims, support the affected families, and promote healing and resilience through meaningful commemorative efforts. And whereas Cesarino Stroza's upcoming mural, "I Walk Beside You," serves as a poignant tribute to the victims and families of the August 3, 2019 tragedy, embodying themes of strength, unity, and hope to foster ongoing community healing. And whereas his mural, painted on the freeway support column beneath Interstate 10, stands as a permanent symbol of-
by active duty service member Tia Marx and Total Eclipse Tinting by Army Veteran Michael Marx, the veteran owned business of the year, as well as many others who are progressing in business and community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the city of El Paso urging all residents and businesses to recognize and celebrate the contributions of black entrepreneurs in our community. August 2025 shall be known as Black Business Month, signed by our honorable mayor, Renard Johnson.
Good morning. I just want to thank the city council, of course Representative Canales for always being there for us. This is truly an honor to receive proclamation for National Black Business Month. And I know many people say, well, we're doing so many different things when it comes to black this and black that, but there's a reason, it's because of the importance of it. And as I mentioned yesterday at an event, the way that the current climate of the country is, so much of black history is trying to be, they're trying to banish it. So we, it's up to us to, you know, keep it moving, keep it moving forward and to celebrate those who are brave enough to even start a business, you know, during this time. When it comes to the, there's, there's been about probably a three to four percent increase in black owned businesses in the United States. We don't have the exact numbers, but for El Paso, we'd like to have those numbers. And we're, that's what we're here for too, to do something about that so that we can identify black owned businesses. Because sometimes there is a different, there are different challenges when it comes to being a black owned business, but it can be done. And I'm standing here as proof, I've been here since 96, and the goal is to assist others with helping them to start a business, to serve as a mentor, to share resources. And that's one of the reasons too, why the city's economic development department is here supporting us. We're happy to work with them on how we can develop even greater. We are in the process of creating a program so that we can actively work with the city's economic and international development department, so that we can assist black entrepreneurs and to get more of an accurate number and to encourage black entrepreneurs to be okay with being identified as a black owned business, because so many try to hide that. And there are systemic and historic reasons on why. So I'm just glad to be here today to, to share a little bit about us and to invite you to our annual business and community awards, in which we recognize black businesses and those in the community who are assisting us in our efforts to create a greater El Paso. Our lifetime achievement award recipient this year is Chief Killings from the fire department, and we'll, we'll be honoring him along with the black business owners and also those in the community who are championing our efforts. So I'd like to just briefly have some of our business owners say a little bit about themselves and their business.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am Taffany Harper, the owner of the Colorful Chapters Bookstore, women owned, locally owned, veterans owned, and black owned. We sell culturally diverse books by diverse authors, and our mission is to share the joy of reading with the El Paso community.
And where, where are you located? So people can find you.
We are located on Instagram, we are a pop-up bookstore, we will pop up at any event all throughout the city.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, city representatives. My name is Reverend Tyrone Durant McDuffie Jr. I'm the owner, founder of Counseling Care Center, takes care of all your counseling, consultant, training needs, and you can find us online. It is a black owned business and a veteran owned business. And our goal is to get rid of the stigma attached to mental health, to let everybody know that you can seek mental health services. And what makes us unique is that we are faith-based in our mental health approach. And thank you for your time and praise God from whom all blessings flow.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Yolanda Hill, and I'm transitioning out of the military, and I've launched my own business. It's called GH Glam Beauty Vending Machines and Cosmetics, and it'll be at a location soon here in El Paso. So I'm setting roots in El Paso, this is gonna be my home. El Paso has welcomed me with open arms, and I would like to expand with my, my business. Thank you.
And Ms. Hill, where was home before?
South Carolina, I'm here.
Well, welcome home now.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll be able to find more black owned businesses online at elpasoblackpages.com or on blackelpassoverice.com. So we invite you all to follow us on social media, just so that you can see what we're trying to do here in the community and in hopes of support also. We'll also, at our event coming up on the 16th, we'll also be honoring those who supported us for Juneteenth, which includes the city of El Paso, our partners in Juneteenth. And this year was truly special to have the mayor and the city manager there. It really encouraged young, young black children. One young lady, I was hoping her mom would allow her to, to come, but she said she was just standing there in awe like, they're black. And if you understood what that means, and I can explain that further a different day, but that meant a lot for young people to see that they can achieve something when so many unfortunately are telling them that they can't achieve anything. So again, we appreciate Mayor, City Council for giving us this proclamation.
Well, you know, thank you guys for all that you're doing. And as you guys know, the African Americans or blacks make up about 3.1% of this community. And we are entrepreneurs, we are business owners, we provide a lot of jobs. I can personally say that I know this from starting several companies here in El Paso that are, are black owned, and having relatives that have started companies that have gone on to be relatively large companies in the United States and throughout the world. So I want to thank you for all that you're doing. And Monica, you mentioned the event on the 16th. Where is it at and what time and all?
On the 16th, this is our third annual, and each year we honor a lifetime achievement award recipient. And it will be at EPCC on Viscount in the auditorium, and it begins at 6:00 PM. And that information can be found on our website at blackelpassoverice.com. Today is the last day for tickets, as our chef said, he needs the final count. So I'm sure you can understand that. So we hope you all can support, come out and support.
All right. Well, fantastic, and congratulations, you guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations. She's awesome. She's over there standing, holding it. Thank you so much. All right, so we're gonna do two rows. If you're a little shorter, go ahead and identify yourselves and come forward. There we go, that looks good. All right, let's bring it in a little closer. That's perfect. Awesome. Uh, sir, can I get you to come a little bit further? Ma'am, could you come forward for me, please? And then sit right behind. Beautiful. All right, that looks great. Ready, big smiles. Uh, represent, Travis, can I get you to come down a little bit? And then Dr. Soder, down a little bit. Perfect. All right, ready, big smiles. One, two, three. Couple more. Ready, one, two, three. Did you want to put your hand up? No? Good. Awesome. Thank you so much.
And the final proclamation is Emma Acosta, LULAC Texas Woman of the Year 2025.
Representative Rocha? Good morning, Representative.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Proclamation. Whereas Emma Acosta, a distinguished civic leader and lifelong advocate for equity, education, and public service, has been named the 2025 LULAC Texas Woman of the Year. A recognition of her remarkable contributions to El Paso and the broader Latino community. And whereas Emma Acosta served the city of El Paso with honor and distinction as a city representative, mayor pro tem, and alternate mayor pro tem, during which she championed environmental sustainability, infrastructure reform, transparency in city finances, and affordable housing as a board member of the Housing Finance Corporation. And whereas Ms. Acosta has been a passionate advocate for inclusion and educational access, leading the charge to expand LULAC Scholarship Program to include students with disabilities seeking vocational training, a bold initiative that began in El Paso and is now garnering national attention and support. And whereas, as President of LULAC Council 22269, Emma has mobilized efforts to bring the 2027 National Con, excuse me, 2027 LULAC National Convention to El Paso. An initiative that promises to bring national visibility, economic benefit, and civic pride to our community. And whereas, Emma Acosta organized the largest welcome home celebration for Vietnam veterans in El Paso's history. A full seven days of events honoring over 2,000 veterans made entirely free through partnerships with generous local businesses, ensuring that those who served were finally welcomed home with the dignity and gratitude they deserved. And whereas, her compassion and commitment to the most vulnerable are evident in her annual blanket drive for seniors under Adult Protective Services, ensuring that each elder receives a blanket and a personal holiday card during Christmas, a reminder that they are not forgotten and always valued. And whereas, through her role as Executive Director of Books Are Gems, Emma Acosta has nurtured literacy across generations by providing free books to children, free classroom resources to over 800 teachers annually, and launching a new initiative inviting elected officials to read books to children on the importance of laws, and civic responsibility, both in person and via Facebook Live. And whereas, her impact continues daily through her leadership, her advocacy, and her unwavering dedication to serving those who need it most, be they students, seniors, veterans, or working families. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the city of El Paso, recognizing and honoring Emma Acosta, the 2025 LULAC Texas Woman of the Year, for her outstanding service, tireless advocacy, and lifelong dedication to empowering our community. August 5th, 2025 shall be known as Emma Acosta Day, signed by the Honorable Mayor Renard Johnson.
Good morning, Representative.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, members of city council and honored guests. I stand before you today with deep gratitude and humility. I want to sincerely thank you for taking the time to recognize my selection as the Texas LULAC Woman of the Year, and for the incredible honor of proclaiming today as Emma Acosta Day. I especially want to thank my city representative, Deanna Rocha Malonado, for placing this item on today's agenda and for her continued support. This recognition means so much, not just to me personally, but to the causes, the causes in the community I have worked to unite and to uplift. Two highlights from my nomination reflect that passion. First, the development of the Students with Disabilities Scholarship Program, which I begin in El Paso and may go national. This scholarship program provides these students to attend vocational training and does not focus on these students' GPA, but rather on their belief that they want to be able to acquire training that will help them find employment and not rely on government assistance. This scholarship program will help open doors for deserving students who face additional challenges. And second, the privilege of chairing the committee to bring the 2027 LULAC National Convention to El Paso, a milestone that will bring national recognition and economic opportunity to our beloved city. I'm especially proud that this initiative will, that this initiative received a letter of support from every member of this council that unified, that unified our commitment, reflects the strength and heart of El Paso. And I want to thank the mayor for donating several gifts that will be provided to the, to the attendees at the National LULAC Convention that will be held in Long Beach, California this week. So thank you, Mayor, for that, for those.
You're very welcome.
We're looking forward to handing those out. I also want to thank my fellow LULAC members, some who are here today with me, as well as the Texas LULAC membership for their faith in me and for standing beside me in this journey. Their support is what made this possible. And to everyone who has ever supported my initiatives throughout the years, your belief in our shared mission continues to inspire me. This recognition is not just mine, it belongs to all of us working together to build a better, more inclusive El Paso. And I want to thank my husband, my Vietnam veteran, husband Ismael Enriquez, who always supports my initiative, and the only thing he asks is, what are we doing next? So I want to thank all of you this morning. Thank you so much for this recognition. I think I know every single one of you. I appreciate all the efforts that you also make to make El Paso much better. And we want to make sure that we highlight El Paso and make it known as a city that is safe and that is welcoming, and that we are one of the best border cities in the entire 2,000 mile border between US and Mexico. Thank you.
Wow. Representative Fiero?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, there's some of us up. But go ahead, Representative.
Wait, you guys have the mic.
Oh, thank you. Well, we want to start by congratulating Ms. Emma Acosta. I am the Vice President of Council 22269, which is her council, and we're very proud of her. And I want to also thank Representative Deanna Malonado Rocha, because, you know, when, when I asked, you were there immediately to support her, and that's what women do. Women uplift women. We don't tear each other down. And that's exactly what Emma represents. And that's what LULAC, this great, you know, recognition that she got, that she earned actually, is what El Paso needs. It's a spotlight on Latina strong women. Thank you, Emma, for being there. And thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the honor this morning of recognizing Emma. My name is Ignacio Teramires, immediate past president, but on behalf of LULAC District Four and Carlos Aguilar, who is the current district director, we just want to thank Emma for her dedication and her strong drive. She single-handedly did the scholarships for the students with disabilities, took it all the way to state, to national, and now we're the pilot program, and hopefully it's gonna continue throughout the years, because we did, I think if I'm not mistaken, every single council had someone with the students with disabilities, and some had even more. Also, she stepped up to the plate for bringing the National Convention to El Paso. Well, hopefully, we're gonna be working real hard this weekend trying to get it over here. I think it would be a great honor to have LULAC in the forefront, bringing this great event to El Paso. We have so much to share with you guys. And like my husband says, he refers to her as the Energizer Bunny. She does not run out of steam. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. So nice to see all of you. It is a true honor to join you today as we recognize one of El Paso's most dedicated servants, our dear friend, Emma Acosta, and celebrate this well-deserved proclamation. So thank you. Emma has long been a force of good for our community as a former city representative and as a LULAC leader, and most recently 2025 LULAC Texas Woman of the Year. Congratulations. I am also proud to present this document on behalf of the Secretary of State, who has officially commissioned Emma as one, a Texas Silver Hair Legislator, a statewide role advocating for older Texans. We were recently sworn in in, for the 21st session of the Texas Silver Hair Legislator in Austin, and Emma's presence strengthened not only our community, our delegation, which it is comprised by myself, Alicia DeJohn Davis, who has been serving five terms, David Johnson, newcomer, Dora Aguirre, and Mary Janes, who are serving the second term. Now, together, we are working to ensure that older adults across Texas are heard, respected, and protected through a smart compassionate policies. So thank you very much, Emma, for your lifelong commitment to this community, for your service, and on behalf of the Secretary of State, it is my privilege to present this to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that.
Representative Fiero?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to just congratulate Representative Acosta for being here, for all she's accomplished for our community. Thank you for being the advocate for young people with special needs, especially when it comes to higher ed. Nobody's voice was louder than yours. And, and not even COVID, Mayor, could stop Representative Acosta. During COVID, she, Books with Gems went virtual, and it was, it was just great. It was a breath of fresh air when you're locked in there. So thank you for everything you've done. And, and thank you for allowing your husband, Ismael, to be my very good, dear friend. Although he denies it, but he does like me. And, and I cannot move forward or stop, Mayor, without saying hi and welcome to Representative Elvia Hernandez. And thank you for being here. It's, Mayor, it's like a Hispanic Chamber reunion here. We have Elvia, David, you, the former chair, it's just a reunion. But thank you so much for everything you've contributed to our community and are still contributing. Thank you, Emma. Thank you, Elvia.
To two of those, to two of your comments, during COVID, and yes, I was the Executive Director for Books Are Gems, and everything was closed, so we came up with a bag of books giveaway. So people would come in, and then we would give them a bag of books, depending on the child's age and gender. And so we gave out 30,000 books that, you know, during COVID. So that was something that was, I mean, that we figured out we could do. And then second of all, to your comment about our, our very well-known LULAC member, Elvia Hernandez, for those of you that don't know, Elvia is the one that started the Christmas Nights, the Christmas Lights Parade back in the day. So there's a lot of history here, but I want to thank all of you, and I, I want to thank you for all your support. I want to thank you for those of you that I know I approach sometimes for, for donations for our students with, my new initiative for students with college, students with disabilities. I have a grandson who is disabled, and he's a young adult now. And one of the things that he said was, I learned a lot from him every day, was Grandma, I don't have a disability, I have a challenge, and challenges can be overcome. And so I think that with the tools that we give these individuals, including the vocational training or any training that they want, will encourage them to become, you know, members of our society that don't depend on government assistance. So this is my, this is why I started that initiative. So thank you all, thank you very much for everything, and thank you for being here, serving our community.
If I may, I'd like to also say a few words about Emma. I mean, she's, she tells me, quita te que yo voy. So we're very, very proud of you. It's wonderful to see all of you, Mayor, City Council, continue your hard work, El Paso is great, and you're making it greater. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Representative Vasaveto?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to thank you for your leadership, Emma. You've done so much for our community, lots of accomplishments, lots, lots of accolades. This was a very long proclamation in the best way possible, and there's things that get left out sometimes. And one, one thing that I remember from our conversations is that you were the person that started FOAC.
I was what?
The person that started FOAC.
Yes, I did.
And so?
Yeah, I, I was one of the ones that initiated the, the FOAC, the Finance Oversight Advisory Committee, because I felt that this was something that the city needed. And so it was not just me, my initiative was mine and my former colleague, Susie Bird, and we put it on the ballot, and it passed unanimously by our, you know, all our voters in El Paso. And I, I'm glad to see that you're chairing it now.
Thank you.
So congratulations to you too.
No, thank you. And, and it's such an important part of the city, and your legacy is really ingrained in it, because you put that there, and I really appreciate that you did. And let's hope we bring LULAC here. As you're trying to convince people, just tell them that we could host them all over downtown, we'll find the space, and everything will be great. No better place than the border to host LULAC. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. And on, on another note, I just want to say something that I didn't know until a few weeks ago. We had the site visitors come down, some of the LULAC council from, from national come down to visit our city, to see if it was something that was accommodating to the National Convention. And the mayor happened to come in to, to dinner with us that day. And so one of the things he said was, one of the councils held by Belen Rolles, who was the national president, she used to hold a male fashion show. And so we found out that our mayor, Renard Johnson, was one of the models, one of the, one of the models in the fashion show. So if you didn't know that fact, now everybody in the city knows that in his youth, he was one of the models in a fashion show for LULAC. So Mayor, thank you for that as well.
You're very welcome. Let's, let's hope there's no pictures of that modeling show. Thank you, my friend. Representative Nino?
Thank you, Mayor. And Emma, thank you so much for all your leadership, and also for showing an example that, you know, public service doesn't end here on the dais, it can continue forever. So thank you again for all your leadership, for also being a friend of mine and, and setting the example. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And there's been so much said today that the, the only things that I can close with is an icon, a civic leader, a friend, and someone that this community is truly, truly blessed to have. And you have done so much, my friend, that there's not enough time to, to, to talk about everything you've done for El Paso, but we cannot thank you enough, and we're standing with you. And we are super excited that, I'm putting the energy out there, that we're gonna get the LULAC National Convention here in El Paso. And if you ever have another fashion show and you need some other models, there's a few on this dais that can help you out.
You said it, okay. And there will be a fashion show sometime in October, so.
There we go. We'll get you some new recruits up there, but again, thank you guys and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Representative Vasaveto?
Thank you, Mayor. And Emma, thank you so much for all your leadership, and also for showing an example that, you know, public service doesn't end here on the dais, it can continue forever. So thank you again for all your leadership, for also being a friend of mine and, and setting the example. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And there's been so much said today that the, the only things that I can close with is an icon, a civic leader, a friend, and someone that this community is truly, truly blessed to have. And you have done so much, my friend, that there's not enough time to, to, to talk about everything you've done for El Paso, but we cannot thank you enough, and we're standing with you. And we are super excited that, I'm putting the energy out there, that we're gonna get the LULAC National Convention here in El Paso. And if you ever have another fashion show and you need some other models, there's a few on this dais that can help you out.
You said it, okay. And there will be a fashion show sometime in October, so.
There we go. We'll get you some new recruits up there, but again, thank you guys and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. 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 Well, good morning again, Ms. Prime. We are ready to begin the city council meeting.
Yes, sir. Good morning. This is a meeting of the El Paso City Council for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. Mayor Johnson is present and presiding in council chambers along with Representative Acevedo, Representative Madonado Rocha, Representative Boyatrejo, Representative Lily Limón, Representative Canales, and Representative Nino. It is 10:04 a.m. We begin the meeting with public comment on agenda items. This morning, we have Suzanne Dip that signed up to speak on items 25 and 26.
Ms. Prime, we don't have the invocation. There's that?
Yes, sir. I apologize. We begin the meeting with the invocation delivered by El Paso Police Chaplain, Robert Hemphill Jr.
Honorable Mayor Johnson and Mayor Protem Chávez and council members, let's bow our heads at this time. We humbly come together, loving and eternal Father, to ask for your divine wisdom for today's council members. And Mayor, lead us, O Lord, while we discuss our city's problems, strengthen our judgment. Give them the insight they need to serve all residents with compassion, justice, and common goal of the prosperous city of El Paso. We faithfully fulfill this civic duty and build a city that deserves a beacon as for everyone. Knowing that you possess immeasurable knowledge, we ask for your grace and hopeful hearts in order to make better decisions. May you be reflected and exalted beyond all else in all we do or decide here today. This we ask in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Prime, call to the public?
Yes, sir. For the record, Mayor Protem Chávez and Representative Fierro have also joined the meeting at 10:06. We now go to the public comment on items on the agenda. This morning, we have Suzanne Dip. She signed up to speak on items 25 and 26. These are introduction of ordinances amending Title 12.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Johnson.
Good morning.
And council, pleasure to see you all this morning. Thank you for your time. I wanted to, excuse me, I wanted to, I'm here as the founder and community liaison for the Sunrise Civic Group. Excuse me. We are an organization that was founded in 2020, and the purpose of our focus is to collaborate with not only a focus on the RIM area and neighborhood, but all of the uptown area. We do something beyond what the neighborhood associations can do. We are collaborative with brokers, real estate brokers, developers, thank you, developers, urban planners, architects, designers. So, we have, we have maybe a different set of eyes when it comes to anything regarding real estate and the preservation of neighborhoods. And I know we're in alignment with you all because your vision talks about safe and beautiful neighborhoods. So, we'd like to stay abreast. We are recognized by the city, and I constantly receive zoning changes, and we weigh in on that because we want to enhance the city. So, if there's any suggestions to be made, definitely we spend some time on that. And I wanted to explain what an NCO is, because our neighborhood of the RIM area has the only neighborhood conservation overlay. We formed in 2001, and it was protect the third neighborhood in the city. It's got a great history. It has an incredible diverse population. We are 47% Hispanic, 34% white, 15% black. And as far as socioeconomics, we have students, social workers, teachers, all the way to former mayors, state senators. So, we have an incredible, it's an incredible example of what a neighborhood could and should be. But anyway, 2001, we formed because we were constantly being bombarded with aggressive change that was happening on our doorstep, what is now considered the uptown. And I don't know how much time I have, but I am, you know, we know where the downtown, uptown plan ordinance should have been, because I was on that committee, and we had a lot of input. The uptown already is the most densely populated area of the city, with UTEP, two major hospitals, community college, and a state highway running down the middle of it. So, pre-COVID numbers on that traffic were 33,000 cars a day. So, anyway, we are fighting off the cars and the traffic that are in our neighborhood of 400 homes. Just last Tuesday, in demanding that we know anything about this implementation program, for a year, we were supposed to have been, been, shared this knowledge.
Thank you, Ms. Dip. You've reached the three minutes, Ms. Dip.
Ms. Prime, let's give her another minute.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyway, we, just last Tuesday, in our meetings with, in the city hall, we found out about this uptown benefit district. It was crafted in part because of that implementation program, I believe. And if you look at, if you look at our map, there are no, there is no parking on Mesa, no parking on Oregon, and only 15 spots left after that streetcar was installed in this uptown area. Aside from that, the only area for parking, public parking, is if you're in a parking lot of a business, a commercial entity. If this plan goes through the downtown uptown, that will eliminate all of the commercial parking, and where will the parking go? Our neighborhood, which we are circumspect, because part of that implementation plan, which was not given to us, shows that the city urban planning department measured our streets for load capacity. How many more cars can they load into our neighborhood? In 2018, we crafted an ordinance with the city to remove the cars from the historic streets, which are very small, very unsafe when people are parked. The neighborhood was built when people had one car. So, anyway, we are asking, we think we are being, we think this is a money-making opportunity for the city, where cars would park in our neighborhood and get ticketed. There's no way, without parking on commercial roadways, that the cars will have, the businesses will have success, but also, it's putting more burden. We are asking the city to listen to the citizens of this neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dip, and I invite you to provide additional comment during the public hearing of these ordinances on August 19th. That brings us to call to the public. The El Paso City Council is a local government body charged with serving the citizens, and the meetings must be focused on the meeting at charge. The city council meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act. Public comment is an accommodation and not a requirement of city council. All persons in attendance are expected to display civility and decorum that is respectful to other persons without the use of insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks, nor may any member of the public use this forum for political statements or campaigning. Please note that during call to the public, the city council may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not on the agenda. However, council may propose that a topic brought forth be posted on a future agenda. This morning, we have...
Ms. Prime, give me one quick second. Representative Rocha?
Just a point of clarification, Ms. Prime. Did Ms. Dip sign up for two items?
They're related, ma'am. Items 25 and 26 are related items.
So, she only gets three minutes for both?
Typically, these items are taken together, and typically, public comment is not taken on the introduction of the ordinances. The comment is taken during the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
And Ms. Prime, did Ms. Turner sign up for item 38?
She did, Mayor, but she wishes to speak at the time the item is discussed.
Okay. Let's continue.
Yes, sir. This morning, we have 26 people that signed up to speak on call to the public. Typically, the time, the 60 minutes is allotted for call to the public, and the time is divided by the number of folks that signed up to speak. However, Mayor Johnson has agreed to give everybody three minutes. So, the timer will be on the screen. It'll be three minutes. It'll show green. Once you have 30 seconds, it'll turn yellow, and once you have five seconds, it'll turn red. At that time, we invite you to provide your closing statement. The first person is Claudia Contreras Siller. Ms. Siller's topic is Back the Blue. She will be followed by Nazli Pamela de la Hoya Flores.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning, everybody. Three days ago, I'm sorry, Sunday, was the anniversary of the Walmart shooting, and I want to send a message to the families of the community, still remembers you. And I want to thank the El Paso Police Department and all of the first responders and law enforcement, because they were the ones that ran into that building to protect everyone against danger and death. And I want to express my gratitude to the El Paso Police Department 100%. They do wonders, even though they have low budget. And I want to say, God bless the police, and I want to wave the most beautiful flag here. And I want to say thank you to the chief and everybody that risked their lives to protect us. Last call to the public, I was here, and I spoke to, about my friend. He died of an overdose, and most likely, it was fentanyl. I want to say that it's very important to teach our kids that these drugs are out there, and every single drug can be laced with it. This person, he was from El Paso, and this picture is from '93. He had the 915 tattooed on his back. His dad died, his two brothers died, and his mother died. He did have medical records about mental illnesses, and the ones that were always there for him was the police department, everybody. So, right here in the CD, I have the police report, and I have the pictures when he was found dead, and this is the worst, worst thing I have ever seen. I'm an animal advocate, and the police department is always there for me whenever I feel threatened, when I'm feeding stray animals, and that's why I want to back them up 100%. And to say that they defend, they're the first responders for our human, the human beings. Yes, yesterday, I was on 311, reporting animals that were loose, and then I saw a break-in in a house. I got transferred to 911, and the police officer showed up, and I even told them, there's three males, big males, that are going inside that building, and just go, don't go alone. And I want to say that this CD, we don't get to see everything that happens behind the scenes. So, we cannot be like gathering to attack establishments when we don't know what's going on, just because they didn't arrive for a break-in or some other, it's because maybe they're taking pictures of a dead body. And I also, I want to express that I am 100% with Animal Services. I was there yesterday, and the day before yesterday, I took in an animal. I went inside the building, and they took him right away for medical care under animal distress. The dog these people are talking about was not taken inside the building. Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless you, everybody.
The next speaker is Nazli Pamela de la Hoya Flores. I don't believe she's here. We'll move to Michael Clark. Mr. Clark, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Michael Clark, star six, please. Mr. Clark's topic is Parks and Recreation's food truck lottery system. Good morning, sir. You have three minutes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city representatives. My name is Michael Clark, and today I stand before you, or over the phone, not just for an concerned citizen, but as a voice for countless small business owners in El Paso who are being stifled by policies that frankly don't even seem to exist on paper. Recently, I submitted an open records request regarding the lottery and permitting process for food trucks in the city parks. I was charged $198 and told it would take 11 hours to locate the documents. Weeks later, I was refunded, not because my request was fulfilled, but because the request, the records could not be found. The reason? The employee who managed those records retired, and there's no system in place to preserve this information for public access. This isn't just about paperwork issues. It's affecting real people, small business owners. My friends, my colleagues are being denied opportunities because of process no one can even prove exists officially. How do we expect businesses to thrive if permits are being granted or denied based on policies that cannot be produced or reviewed? I've heard too many stories from hardworking entrepreneurs who are ready to invest in the city but are held back by a broken system. This is why I believe at this point, everyone who applies for a city permit through Parks and Recreation should receive a permit. We cannot allow small business to be blocked by invisible policies or record cheating. El Paso deserves better, and our business owners deserve fairness, opportunity, and clarity. I really appreciate the time to speak on this. Like I said, I'm passionate about this because I'm an entrepreneur myself, and the way Parks and Recreation is going about this, threatening to use police, threatening to use invisible policies they have not verified themselves, and to ask for public records and not receive them in a timely manner is unacceptable. And, you know, I hope the mayor and the city reps look into this and find out, because your constituents are applying for these permits, people are wanting to make money in El Paso, and it's not happening. So, I appreciate the time to speak on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lisa Turner. She will be followed by Elizabeth Crawford, Brianna Bartquik. Ms. Turner's topic is the budget. Good morning, Ms. Turner.
Good morning, Ms. Turner.
Good morning, Mayor of Council. I can't wait till I get a picture of you on the runway, because I'm going to want to get it signed, okay? I want to talk about the budget. Again, my city council has dumped the burden of running this city on the homeowner. They basically pay 75% of the bill. Business doesn't pay their fair share. And this council? And this council, every council has worked during the budget session to do their best to make sure that business doesn't fulfill its responsibilities in this city, that it doesn't pay its fair share. I don't know when we're going to get around to getting this fixed, but I can tell you right now, there's an easy 10% cut in your budget as it stands today. And I'll give you one of the light items that you can start off with. And that's the money that you pay for the border patrol agents to work overtime. And given the billions that just recently got extra, they got all the money in the world. So you don't need to be paying that much. I, as a taxpayer, Mr. Cortinas is a taxpayer, you as a taxpayer, shouldn't have to be carrying that burden. They've got the money now. It's their fault that we do it. We shouldn't be carrying that burden. That's the first thing you go. But there are other things if we want to talk about them. And I will say this, never again do I want to see in a publication that the veterans are being blamed for increases because they happen to be 100% disabled. There was an article in the El Paso Matters blaming, excuse me, blaming veterans. I'm tired of this. I get, I hear this every budget session. Well, it's the veterans. Because we have to give them something that the state voted on, that people here voted on. So I'm sick and tired of it. So homework for everybody is stop and think, if all the veterans in this town moved to Austin, what do you think, where do you think your economy would be? Thank you.
The next speaker is Elizabeth Crawford. Ms. Crawford, star six, to unmute your telephone. Ms. Crawford's topic is dehumanization and abortion. Good morning, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Good morning. Thank you. In June, we were horrified to read in the news about the decapitated body and later the head found just across the border in Juarez, then the two bodies hanging from the bridge. In God's word, one of the 10 commandments, Exodus 20, thou shalt not murder. From the womb to the tomb, life is a gift from God. August has been designated as Minority Organ Donor Awareness Month. While the intent is to raise awareness for people to voluntarily donate organs as a gift to help those in need, it's also critical to point out that our nation regularly engages in involuntary minority organ donations, especially in our urban areas and in the state of New Mexico. Involuntary. We as pro-lifers are rejoicing that the mega-plan parenthood of Houston, once the largest abortion facility in the western hemisphere, is closing down. Praise God. There are horror reports documented across our nation of babies being stripped of organs even while their little hearts are still beating to be then used for research of intentional born alive babies to do better, more, a better, more efficient job of late-term organ harvesting. I'm not referencing to China. This is the United States. This occurs in New Mexico where El Paso ladies regularly go to abort. In denouncing the city of Nineveh in Assyria, the Lord spoke these words through the prophet Nahum, Nahum, Chapter 3. "Woe to the bloody city, a multitude of slain, a mass of corpses, and countless dead bodies. Behold, I am against you," declares the Lord of hosts. We have dehumanized babies in the womb. They are created in the image of God. America, repent. We are a nation with decades and decades of blood on our hands. America, repent. Thank you.
And the next, the remaining speakers will be speaking regarding animal services. I will remind everyone that this forum shall not be used for personal attacks. If you do, I will need to interrupt you. The next speaker is Brenna Bartquik. Her topic is animal services. Ma'am, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Good morning. You have three minutes.
I have some grave concerns in regards to the management of El Paso Animal Services. It's bad enough to be traumatized by correspondence from the Humane Society International, of which I am a supporter. However, seeing such unspeakable cruelty so close to home is another thing entirely. I'm only tangentially connected to the El Paso Animal Rescue Community as I run a Facebook group for lost and found pets in the city. And even still, I have time and again come across absolute horror stories. I've been told that so many of the employees working at animal services are good people who want the best outcome for all of the animals in their care. And I must say that this has been my experience when interacting with them. However, they are prevented from offering full, compassionate, and timely, and even necessary care by those in charge. El Paso, in my opinion, is a beautiful community full of wonderful people and this is a stain on our city. We must do better. Animals shouldn't be refused intake because a good Samaritan offered them a meal and a bed the night before bringing them in and then being told that it's now their responsibility to care for the animal in full. Critically injured animals shouldn't be made to wait and suffer at the end of the line. And then there's the issue of so many animals being released back onto the streets without being spayed or neutered, which just leads to the perpetuation of this crisis. This is not only a safety issue for the animals, it's a safety issue for everyone and a moral failing for anyone who can step up and make a change for the better and chooses not to. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Margot Boasa. Ms. Boasa's topic, also animal services. Good morning. Star six, please, to unmute your microphone. Margot Boasa, you have three minutes.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. So thank you for the board members as a volunteer for El Paso Animal Services and an animal advocate. I'd just like to bring that El Paso Animal Services Shelter has transformed from a place of despair to one of hope. And our numbers in 2023, El Paso Animal Services has taken approximately 15,405 intakes. As of late 2024, El Paso Animal Services has taken in approximately 20,000 animals that had been projected up to 24,000 intakes per year. And at the end of the year, that was the total number. And the starting of January only of 2025, 1,700 animals taken just in January. This is a very high intake year. This marks a significant increase and highlights the ongoing challenges that the shelter faces with overcrowded and limited resources. El Paso sources is officially a no-kill shelter striving to save at least 90% of incoming animals. However, currently because of the rates that are going so high every year, it hovers around 80, 86% below the no-kill benchmark. Overcrowding, disease, and behavioral decline are ongoing concerns with some animals that need to be euthanized even for space. Improving El Paso Animal Services can build on the impressive programs that they've already made, such as community outreach, education, lunch, neighborhood-based pet care workshops, partner with schools, create multilingual resources for underdeserved communities that aren't in El Paso, boost foster and volunteer programs, also do mentoring systems, collaborate. Overall, with this improvement, we do need to do more funding and we need to reorganize. And this is such a broken system that gets to be just under the rug like there's no problem. There's a huge problem. And the heart of it is going to have to be reorganization of El Paso Animal Services and also the funding. As I myself, as a volunteer, I see that we are so overstressed and so overworked that we just don't know how to do, be able to prevent from all this depth that are happening from these animals. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Barbara Valencia. Ms. Valencia's topic is justice for Imelda. She will be followed by Becky Horowitz, Bonnie Galván, Darlene Rincon, Chris Vélez, Ron Como. Good morning, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. The name Imelda means powerful in battle. Last week, a good Samaritan found a stray dog. The community has named Imelda that was having seizures. She put the little dog into a box and rushed to animal services as that is a place to take sick and injured animals. At animal services, the finder was told to put the dog back in her car and wait. The finder waited in the parking lot for 90 minutes as the dog continued having seizures with no assistance from shelter staff or management. Three times, the finder asked for help but was told to wait her turn. The finder had to sit in the parking lot and watch this little dog suffer for an hour and a half. This is inhumane and animal cruelty at the hands of the department whose job is to assist the stray, sick and injured animals in our community. A dog was left convulsing in the parking lot and was denied urgently necessary care repeatedly. And one of our city representatives took to social media to defend these actions, stating money and space as contributing factors. This dog didn't suffer because of lack of money or space. It suffered because staff followed protocols from the shelter's top leadership that prioritizes order and skewed statistical data over the lives and well-being of the animals. Protocols for staff are instructed to delay care for seriously ill or injured animals to achieve optical and falsely manipulated live release numbers, where dogs are warehoused for months on end while their physical and mental well-being erodes and deteriorates, where good Samaritans are dismissed or ignored when they step up to help and are left feeling discouraged and helpless, where top leadership at the shelter and in our city government has legitimized animal cruelty, where rescue partners are required to remain silent when seeing the wrongs committed by and at this department. This representative went on to further state that for those of us requesting an audit of animal services, the city has hired a consulting firm to do an assessment of animal services. An audit and an assessment are not the same. Our tax dollars are being used for an assessment by a company that uses the best practices of the very ones that put our city in this animal crisis to begin with. Hawes and Best Friends. It's like we are in a never-ending Three Stooges episode. If this animal crisis issue wasn't so serious, it'd be comical. This is not an attack against the hard-working staff and volunteers at the shelter, rather it is the one at the helm that needs to be held accountable and removed immediately. We need a competent, experienced, and compassionate shelter director, not a fireman pretending to be a shelter director. Thank you.
Again, I'll remind the public, please, no personal attacks. The next speaker is Becky Horowitz. Becky Horowitz, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Becky Horowitz, star six, please. Good morning. You have three minutes.
I'm calling because I'm a taxpayer and a very concerned citizen and I know that we have a crisis in our city and the innocent animals are paying the price. The number of injured and hurt animals is exploding and although it's the purpose of the shelter to protect these animals from hunger and thirst, pain and discomfort, disease, and anything that is harmful to them, that is not happening. We are not doing that under the current leadership. And I question the training and the expertise of that leadership and not the staff and the volunteers who are trying their best to help the animals. My advice and recommendation is to work with the wonderful rescue organizations in El Paso who are doing so little with, excuse me, who are doing so much with so little. They have the expertise and they know the situation. Why not hire or offer the opportunity to a group of these directors to work to counsel the animal shelter and see what can be improved and how to improve that? It's time for change and change needs to happen now. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bonnie Galván. Ms. Galván, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Bonnie Galván, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Good morning. You have three minutes.
Good morning.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, I will keep this short for two reasons. I only have three minutes and to me, it is not rocket science. El Paso and county politicians are famed for being reactive instead of proactive, complacent until a tragedy occurs or until the news gets a hold of it, collecting paychecks and awarding salaries without solution. Well, today, we are addressing an issue that all of you know about but continue to avoid. El Paso's streets and deserts are littered with dogs being dumped and neglected, cats too, with no consequences to irresponsible pet owners and breeders, no programs or incentives like low to no-cost spay and neuter programs, which by the way, is the reason the shelter is overflowing. A $22 million or so budget and your shelter director and staff continue to cash their paychecks, paid as you are, to find practical solutions for this ongoing public health issue. And the best they can do is fill more cages, turn people away, advise that you return animals back to the street, and allow helpless animals to suffer a horrible death. See video because you have to wait your turn. Impunity despite your lack of ideas, progress, or remedy. I find it hard to believe that none of you can figure out how to manage that budget better. Fire people who don't do their jobs or find a way to collaborate with the community to create ordinances that punish people for dumping and neglecting these animals, to collaborate to find matching funds to provide spay-neuter services and mandates, maybe wildlife cameras, warning signs posted in high-dump abandoned area. Yet no mayor in El Paso, Horizon, and surrounding areas, no county judge, no rep, none of you have taken this problem seriously. What will it take? A mauling by a pack of dogs left to starve in the streets? Or do we need a consultant from Dallas to show El Paso how to fix this problem? Or maybe a good or better idea would be consult with local rescues and fosters who do your jobs for free. Maybe spend some of that taxpayer money, some of our taxpayer money, on people who create real change. Either way, it's not rocket science. Please do what the community hired you to do, quickly, swiftly, and with distinction. Collaborate with the people who are already doing the work. And just to comment on the lady that talked about animal services, no doubt, many of them are trying to do a good job. However, it is a...
Thank you, Ms. Galván. You've reached the three minutes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Darlene Rincon. She will be followed by Chris Vélez, Ron Como, Loretta Hyde, Karen Washington, Carla Gallardo, Veronica Cordova, Kaylee Baker. Good morning, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Darlene Rincon. I volunteer with some of the rescues here in El Paso. I am here this morning as a concerned citizen regarding the facility at 5001 Fred Wilson Boulevard responding to or accepting intake of loose animals, particularly dogs. I am referring to the use of managed intake policies that are putting both animals and residents at risk. Residents who find animals and attempt to have them picked up or turned them in at the facility are told to leave or take back to where found because shelter is full. This action is not only heartbreaking but unacceptable, leading to animal overpopulation. This policy fails to uphold the five freedoms. Number one, freedom from hunger and thirst, ensuring pets have access to food and water. Freedom from discomfort, providing a comfortable living space for pets. Freedom from pain, injury or disease, offering medical care and treatment when necessary. Freedom to express normal behavior and allowing pets to behave in their natural and healthy ways. Number five, freedom from fear and distress, creating a safe and supportive environment for pets. The facility was giving an additional $2.3 million in 2025 budget to higher additional staff, facilitate the opening of the West Side Facility, which according to Mayor Leeser, 92523, would be a full-blown animal shelter to get animals off the street. I recommend there needs to be better ongoing training to include the person in charge and every other employee, not just in animal care. I am referencing to recent issue of a dog suffering while finder was told to wait your turn. This is unacceptable and should never happen again. Training would also need to include how to serve the public with respect, urgency, and compassion. We all want a safe, humane community for people... We all want a safe, humane community for people and animals. This starts with responsive services and ethical standards. Thank you.
The next speaker is Chris Velez. Chris Velez, followed by Ron Como, Loretta Hyde, Karen Washington. Good morning, you have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Chris Velez, and I actually am a nonprofit myself. Lily, I owe you a meeting. Amazing, I'm glad you're back in. Okay, my concern with the shelter is that it is reactive, not proactive. Okay, on average, they have about 3,300 pets on their books, right? So that's what our budget is paying for, 3,300. But the problem is, we don't know the scalability. So what is it, 3,300? Is that their capacity? Is that the max? Can we go higher? Can we go lower? Can we look at scalability? Maybe look at a city that's equal-sized to see what their shelter's built out to. Okay? Number two, we don't do a good job of managing our population. So we have 3,300 dogs in the shelter care system daily, right? Well, that's the end of the month reports, 3,300 daily. Out of those 3,300, only about 1,200 are listed for adoption. So where are the rest of the animals at? Is that the warehousing part? Do you see what I'm saying? We're paying for animals that are not available for adoption. Why are we paying for them as taxpayers? Are they warehoused because their behavioral issues, because their medical issues, because we don't know where we're at, because they went out to foster, we lost track of the foster, we lost track of the animal? What's going on with that? So as a taxpayer, why am I paying for $1,200 or 1,200 animals a month that don't exist? So that's the other thing we have to kind of get control of, is where these animals are at. The other issue we have is, what are we doing proactively as far as educating the public? We built this great little education room at the main shelter, right? But it's basically based on people coming to the shelter. A lot of people don't even know where the shelter's at. Sad to say, but you see it on Facebook, someone finds an animal, and then rescues will walk them through with what to do with their animals. So why can't we send out a postcard with a call 311, take it to the fire department, get it scanned for a chip? You know, you have 72 hours to go to the shelter, get it registered, or else it's your problem. Right? We know when to take out our trash cans, we know when it's a recycle day, but we don't know that we need a spay and neuter our pets. We don't know what to do when we find a lost pet. We don't know where to go if we have pets that are loose, stray. And also, we don't know what to do when we get attacked by an animal. Do we call 911? Do we call 311? What's the protocol? I mean, do I need a rabies shot? What are the steps necessary? So it's something that we could do maybe once a year, is send out a postcard, right? Then we own the electric company, the gas company, everybody else. Why can't we just put spay and neuter on every bill? It's just a mental note, right? They hear it every day, spay and neuter, like the news channels should always end their daily whatever with spay and neuter your pets, like Bob Barker. Because it just puts that thought out there, right? That continuous spay and neuter, why are they telling me this? And you start educating themselves. It's that education piece. We need to be more proactive about it. The other thing, too, is what is, like I said, the gap in what we need to have versus what we have? We're gonna have to euthanize. There's no way around it. Like, I think the live release rate for June was 76%. The month before was 75. So we euthanizing 25% of our animals, right?
Thank you, ma'am. You've reached the three minutes.
Oh, sorry, I ran out of time. But we just need to be more proactive, is what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The next speaker is Ron Como. He will be followed by Loretta Hyde, Karen Washington, Carla Gallardo, Veronica Cordova. Good morning, you have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am. I'll try to keep you from having to stop me. Welcome. So let's start with some basic information. Up until 2019, we intaked everything, everything, period. 2020, we started the HAWAIS Sheltering Plan and Managed Intake, which is illegal in the state of Texas, 826.033. Yet, it's allowed to happen every day. So now, here we are in 2025, everybody's saying there's too many strays. Why? Why is the shelter closed? Why are they managing intake? We purchased a facility to take on some of the overflow, and we all sit here waiting for the city of El Paso to open up the facility for what it was supposed to be. In the meantime, we have animals being left on the streets, we have animals not being taken care of, we got animals missing that are supposed to be in the shelter and foster. We've got a catastrophe going on. When are we going to fix this? I remember a few months ago, we had a conversation about a certain group of rescues that would go once a month and discuss the issues and the ways to fix it. And that, once it was fixed, we would continue this to make sure we didn't ever slip back to where we are today. What happened to that? Are we going to do absolutely nothing and continue to make the stray crisis more and more of a problem? The longer we put off fixing the issues, the more strays we are creating for the city of El Paso, the more people we're putting in danger, the more strays we're putting in danger, the more pets we're putting in danger, because someone doesn't want to house a bunch of strays. So why is he at El Paso Animal Services? Come on, folks. Like the lady said, it's not rocket science. And just for the record, in 2019, in July, intake was 2,683. So let's not get this, oh, we did so much. No, you didn't do enough, which is what we've had since 2020. We need people that actually know how to be successful to do these things, rather than people that are just collecting paychecks. Thank you.
The next speaker is Loretta Hyde. She will be followed by Karen Washington, Carla Gallardo, Veronica Cordova, Kaylee Baker. Good morning, you have three minutes.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
My name is Loretta Hyde. I'm with the Animal Rescue League. I am the founder since 1975. We've been doing rescue. When I started doing rescue, I worked closely with animal services. I've been with, like, six directors since I've been the only person here. They've had, like, six directors. And each time a new director is brought in, we always offer our assistance and say that we'd love to do a task force and help you if that would be something that you'd be interested in, since we've been doing rescue for 30 years. We were told, no, we got it, we're good. Okay? So I saw the little dog that was laying in the box that was suffering, and I'm saying to myself, that's just not acceptable. You don't treat animals like that. You don't, somebody on the staff should get up, go look and see if the person's been in there three times to tell you that there's something wrong with this little dog, and everybody says, wait your turn, while that little dog is seizing, and those people are sitting out there in the sun in their car. It's just unacceptable behavior, for any part, whether it be a rescue or animal services. I think they should set an example and do what's best for the job that they are doing that they took on themselves to say that I'm here to represent El Paso and animal services. My thing is, the last time we had a meeting with the animal director, I asked him, why do the rescues always have to show up to the hoarding cases and the lost and found and go out in the desert and trap everybody and be legally and financially responsible for all these animals when it's not our job? We do it because we love and we have the passion to help rescue and take care of these babies and put them back into forever homes. And if you didn't have the rescues here in El Paso, I can't even imagine how bad animal services would have the problem of doing intakes and taking care of what they have. So I was told they do the best they can. When we go out, we assess the situation, and then we end up getting the 22 dogs or the 12 dogs that's been locked in a room for three years and everybody's been complaining. Animal Services and city council has to get something going that they can find a solution and be proactive, like Chris said, because it's not the rescues' job to do the job that they're doing for you, but we choose to do it because we love and we have the passion that comes with loving your four-legged friends and making sure that, you know, everything is what it should be here in El Paso and be proud of El Paso and not be, you know, set everybody that comes here, say that we suck, you know, that animals are loose, there're dead animals everywhere, and that's just not the way I want to represent El Paso. So please, help us.
Thank you, Ms. Hyde.
The next speaker is Karen Washington, followed by Carla Gallardo, Veronica Cordova. Good morning, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning, city council, mayor. El Paso Animal Services upholds the five freedoms for animals in its care, ensuring their well-being. These freedoms are freedom from hunger and thirst, freedom from discomfort, freedom from pain and injury. This dog went into the shelter in obvious pain, and so you've already seen the video, you've heard it all. This should have been handled, I think, a little bit more compassionately. But I am Positive Rescuers of El Paso. I'm a nonprofit. I've been rescuing dogs here for a little over 20 years. I do not attend these meetings on a regular basis, only because from my past experiences here, I feel as though I'm not heard and nor do any of you care about this crisis that El Paso is in. The incident this past week was nothing short of animal cruelty. Once again, animal services has an excuse. We did not know how bad or sick the dog was. I, for one, am a taxpayer, and my taxes help fund El Paso Animal Services. Our shelter has it all wrong, and until our elected officials step up and put a true animal advocate, somebody with compassion, a leader, in place, we continue this horrible path. Which path is this, you might ask? Good Samaritans finding dogs and calling 311, where recently, a lady was told by 311 that most likely, animal control would not take the dog in because they are full. Or a good Samaritan finding a dog and taking it directly to animal services, only to be told, take it back to where it was found. Animal Services personnel have resorted to giving the public my phone number, telling them, contact Positive Rescuers. This is not how this is supposed to work. When? When will you listen to us and hear us or answer our emails? We elected you all, we deserve answers to our concerns, and the response, contact animal services, which one representative recently responded to Mrs. Carrie Hoover, is just passing the buck. Please stop ignoring us. We are in a crisis, and unless you all step up and implement change, these dogs will continue to suffer. I have offered in the past for any of you to meet with me one-on-one, so that I can share with you my experiences on a day-to-day basis. None of you have taken this opportunity. My offer still stands. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carla Gallardo. Carla Gallardo. Veronica Cordova. Veronica Cordova.
Ms. Frank, Carla's not here?
No, sir.
Okay.
Good morning, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. I come here just like everybody else, as a concerned citizen and animal lover, to voice and address the big problem we have of stray dogs and cats in our city of El Paso. As this problem keeps getting worse, of innocent animals suffering on the streets and shelters getting overwhelmed, the only answer to somehow alleviate the problem is a massive spay and neuter campaign. And I'm gonna repeat that, because I believe that's the only answer to this problem. We need a massive spay and neuter campaign. I have a friend in Juarez, which I think we have a lot of more resources, that they're doing that. They're doing massive spay and neuter. They're doing 100 to 200 a day. They pick them up from the streets to do that. So if they can do it, how come we can't? I believe we have more resources than they do. As most of the money comes from the city of El Paso, from general fund, there needs to be a way to spread the wealth and additional funding to animal welfare and somehow prevent more suffering of defenseless animals on the streets that feel hunger, thirst, and pain, just like we do. Presently, I have 10 dogs at my house that I've been taking. If I had more room, I would take more. But I think we need to do this as a city, as a society, as everybody. We need everybody involved, because this problem is getting bad. If you guys ever cruise everywhere, especially the east side, there's a lot of stray dogs and everywhere. Some of them just skin. They don't, nobody feeds them or whatever, but it's a problem that I see growing since I've been here in El Paso for my life. It's growing and growing, and nobody seems to do anything about it. So please, hear what we're saying, and we really appreciate more help. We really need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kaylee Baker. Kaylee Baker, if you're in the queue, star six, please, to unmute your telephone. Kaylee Baker, star six, please. I don't see her phone number in the queue. We'll move on to Elena Perez, followed by Randolph Rivera, Marisol Sanchez, Candace Castañeda, Elena Hancock. Good morning, ma'am, you have three minutes.
I wrote it on my phone. Good morning, city council members. My name is Elena Perez, and I'm the founder of Paws of Promise Animal Rescue Organization. I'm here today not just as a rescue advocate, but as a mother, a neighbor, and a concerned resident who sees a serious public safety and animal welfare crisis unfolding in our city, and it's worsening by the day. For the past eight years, my family and I have been saving dogs and cats out of our home. In that time, we've saved over 3,000 dogs, many of them from the street, others from abuse, neglect, and we've even pulled from our city shelter. I'm here today because the animals in our city are suffering, and despite the best efforts of a few dedicated individuals and underfunded rescues, the need is overwhelming and getting worse. We are flooded daily with calls about strays, injured, or dumped animals, and there are too few resources, too little funding, and virtually no city-led solutions in place to help us. On Tuesday, a chihuahua was found convulsing within city limits. A good Samaritan rushed her to our city shelter. The dog was clearly in distress, but she was left in a cardboard box for 90 minutes. No one came out to see her, no one helped her. That's not humane sheltering. That is neglect. This is not an isolated incident. People trying to do the right thing in our community are bringing in found strays, and they're being turned away. Others are being met by staff, saying there's no space, and they're actually being told to put the animals back where they found them, which is on the streets, to continue starving, breeding, attacking other people's pets, and in some cases, people. It's not fair to the animals, and it's not fair to our community. We need to enforce existing laws around animal cruelty, which are tethering breeding and abandonment, maybe an audit of the shelter's operations and staff performance, mandatory animal care emergency response training, transparent intake policy that welcomes, not turns away, found animals, and a real investment in infrastructure, staffing, and accountability. I'm not here to place blame, I'm here to ask for leadership. Our city shelter should be a place of safety and compassion, not a place where animals die while people look the other way. Our community deserves a shelter that functions with integrity, and the animals deserve it, the taxpayers deserve it, and you guys, as a city council, have the power to make it happen. We are not being heard. You have a choice. We all do. We can be a community that turns a blind eye to suffering, or we can become a city that leads by compassion, action, and responsibility. I urge you to hear us. Take animal cruelty and make it a priority, their welfare, not just for the sake of the animals, but for the health, safety, and dignity of our entire community. Thank you for listening and for acting.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Randolph Rivera. Randolph Rivera. Marisol Sanchez. She will be followed by Candace Castañeda and Elena Hancock. Good morning, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Marisol Sanchez, and I rescue animals. That wasn't the plan, but I can't ignore an animal in need, because my morals don't allow me to do so. A few years ago, I started rescuing desert dogs because of the neglect from animal services. There was this dog that had been abandoned for four years, and the construction man told me that she had been in the area that long, and when animal services was called, they would come and look around and then leave. So I decided to do something about it, because what kind of person leaves an animal out fending for themselves? I began feeding the dog every day, and I named her Wednesday. Eventually, after two months, I took her home, and I called animal services, and they told me, oh, you can rehome her or keep her, she's essentially yours. I called rescues, but they were all full. This same story has repeated seven times with seven different dogs. My last rescue was just last month. I named her Meadow, and she had been in the desert for six months. Animal Services did the same thing. Animal Services did the same thing. I've seen posts on social media with people in the same predicament as I was, and as I am. Animals turned away from Animal Services, abandoned, trying to find a place to be. We shouldn't normalize what is happening. Seeing dogs die because of lack of empathy, lack of leadership, lack of training shouldn't be normalized. That's cruelty, and that is shameful. And that is happening here in El Paso. I find it hard to believe that we have elected officials that know the needs of our community, yet no one is doing anything about it. The policies at Animal Services are widely criticized across the nation, yet they continue in place. I find it hard to believe that a director was hired without any training or any skills for that job, and our animals are dying under his supervision, and no one bats an eye. One dog forgotten, one cat neglected, one dead animal is too many. But our elected officials can sit here and go home to their nice pets and their nice houses and ignore the dogs, the cats, that are beyond their four walls. Our animals are literally one step away from being the next victims of Animal Services, from the inexperienced director. How can you all really not care?
I'll ask you to refrain from personnel attacks. Go ahead, ma'am, you have 47 seconds.
Our animals are one step away from being the victims of Animal Services? Okay. How can you all not care? I'm deeply disturbed and ashamed that this is happening in El Paso, and that's why we're here demanding change and demanding that our voices be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Candace Castañeda. Ms. Castañeda will be followed by Elena Hancock, Emily Coslet, Jacqueline Horn, and Eileen Mendoza. Good morning, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Good morning. Um, good morning, council members. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak today. My name is Candace Castañeda, and I'm here as a concerned resident who cares deeply about the welfare of animals in our community, as well as the people who do their best to help them. Right now, our Animal Services Department is struggling, and it's not just because of lack in compassion, but because of lack of resources and support. Injured animals are often left waiting for too long for care, because workers within the facility don't triage at check-in. In some cases, help doesn't come at all while animals are suffering, either on the street or waiting their turn in the waiting queue. This is due to improperly trained staff who become overwhelmed and just simply can't keep up. There are not enough staff members to properly clean kennels, respond to calls, or care for the animals coming in. As a result, conditions inside the shelter are suffering, as dogs that are too small, are, dogs that are too to a too small of a kennel for them have to live within their own feces, and animals are being left out in the elements because there just isn't enough space inside. Animal Services needs to find alternatives to lower their population within the facility and hold owners legally accountable, instead of not following through with their legal cases. Residents who try to do the right thing are running into serious roadblocks as well. People who find stray or injured animals are being told they cannot be accepted at the shelter, and instead told to figure it out or turn the animals to where they, where they found them. That's incredibly frustrating and confusing, especially when those same residents are then threatened with animal abandonment charges for doing exactly what Animal Services tells them to do. They're just trying to be good Samaritans. We're also seeing a major impact in rural areas. Packs of dogs are becoming more common in the county, and many of these dogs are being dumped there by people from the city, because Animal Services will not accept their pets. These, this puts additional pressure on county resources that are already limited. The city needs to take some responsibility for that and offer more support to the county, especially since Animal Services limits the amount that county animal welfare can bring in. Local rescue groups have been stepping in to help, but Animal Services falls short. These groups are doing incredible work, but they cannot do it alone, and they cannot do it for free. They need funding and support to continue filling in the gaps and understanding that most of these are run out of their homes. We also need to invest in prevention. Offering free spay and neuter services for city residents could make a big difference in reducing the number of unwanted litters. This is a proactive solution that would pay off in the long run. Lastly, the Animal Services staff would benefit from basic triage training. They're often the first ones to see or hear of any animal when they are brought in to determine if the animal is in distress, and giving them the skills to assess and stabilize animals quickly could save lives. I'm not here to criticize, I'm here because I believe we all want the same thing, a safer, more humane, and more effective system for animals in our city. The community is ready to help, but we need the city to meet us halfway with the right tools, training, and funding. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Elena Hancock. She will be followed by Emily Coslet, Jacqueline Horn, and Eileen Mendoza. Good morning, you have three minutes.
Good morning, mayor and city council members. Uh, my name is Alana Hancock, and I'm here today as a concerned resident, animal foster, and advocate. I'm seeking not just for myself, but for the countless animals in the city and the community members who are trying desperately to help them, despite being repeatedly let down by El Paso Animal Services. I work full-time and I go to school full-time. I have personally fostered 50 animals alone this year from Animal Services and local rescues. The city shelter is in crisis. Over the past 10 years, I've fostered animals for several city-run shelters throughout the region. I've seen what it looks like when a system works, even under pressure. But here in El Paso, Animal Services is under-resourced, unsupported, and failing at the most basic level. It's not just disorganized, it's dysfunctional, and the animals are paying the price. I have found abandoned and injured dogs and taken them to the shelter, only be told more than once to just put them back where I found them. Obviously, I cannot do that. That's just not heartbreaking, it's irresponsible. It's a public safety issue, and it's completely, and it completely contradicts the purpose of what an open intake shelter is supposed to be. When I've fostered through Animal Services, I've received little to no support, minimal supplies, no follow-up, no guidance. And I'm not alone. Other fosters in the city are often left to cover the costs themselves or turn to local rescues just to give these animals a chance. Meanwhile, the front desk and vet staff are often rude, dismissive, and lacking the basic training necessary to serve the public care, to serve the public or care for animals. It's not a matter of an individual bad attitudes, it's a reflection of a system that's stretched too thin and given no real tools to succeed. The burden of this failure falls squarely on the backs of local rescues, most of which are volunteer-run, operating out of their own homes, and are funded with personal resources. These rescue workers are exhausted, they're burned out, and they're doing the very job Animal Services should be doing with zero support from the city. This is not just a staffing issue, it's not just a, uh, sorry, this is not just a staffing issue, it's not just a funding issue, it's a leadership issue. I urge the city council to stop looking away. The problem is only growing. Animals are dying, the community is losing faith, and those who care are being left without options. Fund the shelter properly, invest in proper foster care, infrastructure, and training, equip staff with tools and resources and compassion they need, and above all, listen to the people who are here doing the work on the ground without pay, without thanks, and without city support. They'll pass, the animals of El Paso deserve better, the city, the, sorry, the community deserves better, and El Paso as a city can do better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Emily Coslet. Emily Coslet, star six, please tune in, mute your telephone. Good morning, you have three minutes.
Good morning, ma'am, mayor and city council members. Today, I am here as one of the many animal advocates in El Paso. Um, I could share with you several examples of the last two years I've lived in El Paso and my sadness for the conditions for animals, but I'll share two. In early 2025, I called Horizon Animal Services regarding a dog frantically running along Horizon Boulevard. Their response is, "We'll get there when we get there." I followed the dog for nearly 30 minutes and several miles, hoping she would stay safe and hoping someone would show up. No one did, and she disappeared. Every day, I hope that she survives. Then in April of 2025, I managed to secure a wandering dog in my neighborhood. Animal Services collected him from my home, only to return within 10 minutes, basically long enough to circle the block. Their message to me, "There's no room in the shelter you'll need to keep him," or "Release him." At that time, I already had a foster dog and my own dog in my home. The next day, I took him to the shelter and pleaded for help. I was one of the fortunate ones, they were able to take him. However, the message is clear. If you attempt to, to assist animals in need in our community, you, they become your responsibility, or you can put them back where you found them and hope they don't end up one of the many animals dead on the side of the road. This raises a pressing question. Why does the city have stringent enforcement against dumping trash in the desert? So strict that junk removers are afraid to operate in some areas, yet there are no such protections for the countless animals abandoned in those same deserts? Why are dogs left in sweltering cars returned to neglectful owners without consequences? Why are packs of animals and suffering animals, including two known packs here in Horizon City, continually ignored? The shelter lacks the resources and support from city leadership. Local rescues are overwhelmed emotionally and financially drained with minimal support from the city. I am actively involved with Paws of Promise Animal Rescue. They see it every day, taking in neglect and abandonment cases constantly. Many compassionate individuals in our community are afraid to help animals, worried that the very institutions designed to assist them will turn them away. We need change. I'm pleading with the city to prioritize animal welfare. We don't need to hear about a $20 million amphitheater or another massive parking structure, or some other massive amount of money from city council representatives. Focus on sharing their own agendas in their meetings. What we desperately need is genuine concern for the animals in our community, enforcement against animal abuse and abandonment, expanded funding for shelter space and staff, and meaningful support for our rescues. The lives of the animals in our community and the well-being of our community depend on it. So again, I say, I'm bleeding, I'm pleading with city representation.
Thank you, Ms. Coslet, you've reached the three minutes, thank you. The next speaker is Jacqueline Horn. She will be followed by Eileen Mendoza. Good morning, you have three minutes.
Good morning, mayor and city council. I hope you guys are all doing well today. I am here as well with many of the community, concerned about the problem that we have here with the animals. I want to begin by saying, I am a veteran, I am a military spouse, I am a homeschooled mom. And I want to highlight this, because that is a lot to juggle in my agenda. And I am here today because my brother stepped up, coming from California, to give me the privilege and honor to talk to you guys about the issue that we have here. This is a lot for us to handle on our own. We need help, we need the city to step up. I would like for us in 10 seconds to take 60 seconds of silence for this animal that suffered. 60 seconds at two-minute mark. I ask you guys, I saw that you guys all prayed before this. I want you guys to know that every living, breathing thing matters to God. Please join me. Was that my 60 seconds? Is anybody tracking? That was 60 seconds, you guys. This animal waited over 60 minutes. Over it, that was 60 seconds that we experienced of silence. That was a lot, right? That was heavy. This is what we are all experiencing on a daily, on a daily, you guys. I went on vacation, and although this did not happen in our city, this is what we experience on a daily. I found three kittens at a Walmart parking lot. I grabbed them, and I came, and I want to say that I have lost one of them on the 10th. I had no confidence going to the city for this. I drove to the emergency room for 16 minutes. 16 minutes where kittens died in my hand. I cannot imagine this person, this person that waited over two hours almost, an hour and a half, two hours, too long.
Thank you, Ms. Horn.
Please, I'm pleading with you guys. Pay attention to us, please.
The final speaker is Eileen Mendoza. Eileen Mendoza, star six, please, tune in, mute your telephone. Eileen Mendoza, star six, please, tune in, mute your telephone. Good morning, you have three minutes.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, mayor and city council. I am a volunteer with El Paso Animal Services, and I also run the Rescue Runners program. I'm calling in to voice my thanks to the staff at El Paso Animal Services. As a volunteer, I see what they go through, day in and day out, as the animals continue to flow in, with most times nowhere to put them. From working directly with staff and in the work I do at the shelter myself, you can see how heavy it weighs on them. You can see them struggling just to stay above water. That's why our organization encouraged the community to come out to volunteer, to see what the shelter is dealing with. None of it is a secret, it's a harsh reality that you cannot even comprehend until you walk through it. All the other area shelters can close their doors when they get overwhelmed, the city shelter cannot. This makes for a very different dynamic, where they are expected to just make it work. I do agree with previous callers that we need free spay and neuter, and that some of the protocols and training of the shelter need to be addressed, but I just wanted to voice my appreciation for the hard work that I know is happening, because I see it myself. I know these words from callers do make it down to the staff, and I don't want them to lose heart, because we do see you and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, council. That concludes call to the public.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brian. And for those of you that, um, from the public that showed up today, first, I want to thank you for taking the time from work, from school, uh, to come to city council, to have a voice for the voiceless, and to, you know, many of you brought ideas and, and solutions that, um, we were gonna listen to. And I do want you to know, and I think I speak on behalf of the entire council, that we heard you today. So, you know, again, we want to thank you for coming out and having a civil discourse to talk about a very, very tough topic for this community. And we heard you, and we will, we'll get to work. But thank you guys for taking the time to come give us your voice, and we, we have some work to do, but thank you. Ms. Brian?
Yes, mayor, at this time, would you like to recess the council meeting to convene the special meeting?
Yes, please.
There's a motion and a second to recess the regular city council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the regular city council meeting is in recess at 11:17 a.m. Good morning, this is a special meeting of the El Paso City Council for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. Mayor Johnson is present in presiding in council chambers, along with Mayor Pro Tem Chavez, Representative Acevedo, Representative Maldonado Rocha, Representative Boyatrejo, Representative Niño, alternate mayor Pro Tem Fiero, Representative Limón, and Representative Canales. It is 11:18 a.m.
Let's take agenda item number one.
Yes, sir, item number one is discussion and action on a resolution of the city council to urge the Texas 89th Legislature to support El Paso by ensuring Fort Bliss and the El Paso International Airport remain in Congressional District 16. This item was submitted by Representative Acevedo Rocha and Niño.
Okay, Representative Acevedo.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you to Representative Maldonado Rocha and Representative Niño for joining me on this item, as we're seeing, uh, a big, um, power grab at, at the state level to redraw maps, and this is going to really negatively impact El Paso, and I think that's where we should all be concerned on this. The proposed map at hand really takes out the airport and Fort Bliss, and those are two vital assets that our city has. Fort Bliss is El Paso, and El Paso is Fort Bliss, and our airport is such a, a big matter for the city of El Paso. So I'm hoping that my colleagues will join me in passing this resolution today. The county of El Paso passed a similar resolution yesterday unanimously. So I'll read the resolution. Whereas the governor has convened a special legislative session of the Texas 89th Legislature to consider legislation relating to the point, apportionment uh, of the state of Texas into districts used to elect members of the United States House of Representatives, a process known as redistricting. And whereas redistricting is the revision or replacement of existing electoral districts resulting in new districts with different geographical boundaries in order to equalize population among electoral districts after publication of the United States decennial census indicates that the population has increased or decreased over the last decade. And whereas the Texas Senate has proposed a redistricting map that would remove Fort Bliss and the El Paso, El Paso International Airport from District 16, which is an El Paso-based congressional district, and would place these two vital economic drivers for our community and region in District 23, which is based in San Antonio. And whereas if the proposed map is approved, a significant portion of our city, including Fort Bliss with its VA healthcare center and the El Paso International Airport, will be represented by a con, represented by a congressional delegate. be represented by a congressional delegation member based over 550 miles away, as opposed to a member based within the city, familiar with the needs and services of our city and its residents. And whereas, the El Paso International Airport, owned and operated by the city of El Paso, is a catalyst for growth and plays an important role in the strength and resilience of our region's economy. And whereas, the city of El Paso has identified the continued growth and development of the El Paso International Airport as a key strategic objective, successfully engaging in the development of airport land, including the construction of a $150 million distribution center, bringing approximately 950 new jobs to the region and generating over $48 million in revenue to the airport over the next 50 years. And whereas, $15.4 billion worth of goods moved through the airport's Foreign Trade Zone Number 68, and $3.7 billion worth of merchandise was exported from this zone to other countries in 2024 alone. And further, Foreign Trade Zone Number 68 is directly responsible for 2,930 jobs. And whereas, with an average of 55 departures per day and an annual $4 million throughput in total passenger traffic, the airport facilitates tourism and provides local businesses with access to the global market. And whereas, Fort Bliss has a $4 billion impact on the local economy, directly employs over 47,000 people and indirectly employs another nearly 84,000, making Fort Bliss the single largest employer in the El Paso region, contributing to the livelihood of at least one in five people in El Paso. And whereas, in 2020, there were nearly 38,000 active-duty family members that reside in the El Paso region where they live, work, and play, while an additional 3,000 soldiers released from active duty decided to make El Paso their permanent home. And whereas, El Paso is proud to be, one, located in the veterans' capital of the U.S., two, ranked as one of the top 10 best places for veterans to live in the United States, and indeed, three, home to over 50,000 veterans who serve an integral part of our community, with this population looking forward to the construction of a new VA healthcare center, which will be conveniently located on 36 acres of Fort Bliss property. And whereas, the city of El Paso and Fort Bliss have a history of strong cooperation, ensuring our shared community has access to the services critical to public safety, education, and quality of life. And whereas, drawing a district boundary that excludes the El Paso International Airport and Fort Bliss from being represented by a congressional representative who is locally based and understands the needs of these key community assets and the critical role they play in the strength and resilience of our community removes the close working relationship that has proven vital for federal funding, opportunities, and constant cohesive support for both the El Paso International Airport and Fort Bliss. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of El Paso that the City Council of the city of El Paso urges the Texas 89th Legislature to support El Paso by ensuring Fort Bliss and the El Paso International Airport remain in Congressional District 16.
Thank you, Representative Rocha.
Sorry, I move to approve.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Representative Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rep Acevedo, for that. I just wanted to provide a little context on here as well. Last week, when I learned that the redistricting was coming up over on the Senate side, I decided to sign up and submit testimony virtually, which I did. And at the time, when the testimony was finished, Senator Blanco asked me a question, and he said, "How vital is the El Paso International Airport to the city of El Paso? Or how important is it?" And my response to him was that it's vital. Because our location supports trade, travel, and business across the border, the airport is a key part of our economy. It not only connects people and goods to markets across the nation and internationally, but these connections also bring jobs, investment, and growth. I had a word with Mayor Johnson at the fire department graduation on Thursday evening about a possible trip to Austin by the following morning for the House committee meeting. And while that trip wasn't made possible or wasn't possible on either of our parts, I did submit testimony for the House meeting on Friday morning along with this resolution that's co-sponsored with Rep Acevedo and Rep Niño. But more importantly, one thing that I want to highlight is that our bi-national and bi-cultural community sits halfway between Houston and Los Angeles, and also has strong ties to Mexico. Redistricting can affect how our community is represented. We are in a very strategic location for trade and transportation across Texas. Keeping our community whole helps ensure lawmakers understand and represent our needs tied to this location and our bi-national role. If fragmented, our ability to influence decisions on trade and infrastructure could weaken. And protecting El Paso's voice in redistricting also ensures that our region can continue to grow and thrive as a key hub between Texas and Mexico. So I just wanted to thank Rep Acevedo and Rep Niño for co-sponsoring this resolution with me today. Thank you, Mayor.
Representative Limón.
Thank you, Mayor. I fully support this resolution and wish to add something to it. As a minority-majority state, this redistricting is a blatant attempt to wipe out the African-American vote and the Latino vote. It is shameful that we are having to go through this in this time in our lives, and we thought that civil rights and all of the fights had been settled, but it continues to be an attempt to wipe out the African-American and the Latino history in our country. And I fully support this resolution. Thank you.
Representative Niño?
Thank you, Mayor, and I echo what, you know, I had a conversation also with Rep Rocha at the fire department's graduation. And earlier this year, we adopted a, you know, our state priorities in the agenda, and I felt that it was important that this council had the opportunity to just have the conversation. Overall, we do own and operate the airport, and it's such a big economic driver, which is the reason why, you know, in this conversation with Rep Rocha, and when I was asked if I could, you know, support this resolution, I felt that it was important for this council to be able to just have that opportunity to have that conversation. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Representative Canales?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm also very supportive of this resolution. I want to be really clear, the proposed redistricting, it's not about fair representation. It's not about following the census. It's not about serving the people of El Paso or really anywhere in Texas. It's purely about political control. And you don't have to take it from me, and you don't have to take it from anyone else aside from, I think, the one person who's clearly pushing this forward. Just this morning, Donald Trump said the following. He said, "We have an opportunity in Texas to pick up five seats. I got the highest vote in the history of Texas, as you probably know, and we are entitled to five more seats." So you don't have to take it from us. You're hearing it from the people pushing this plan. They feel entitled to those seats, not winning them in elections, but entitled because they feel that they deserve them regardless. As you heard in the text of the resolution, as Representative Acevedo read it, under this plan, major parts of our community, Fort Bliss, the airport, they would be taken out of the district they're currently in, represented by Congresswoman Escobar, and really shoved into a different district, represented by someone hundreds of miles away in San Antonio. I think there's absolutely no argument that that's to our benefit in El Paso. Really, whether that representative in the future is a Democrat or a Republican or from whatever party, we should be represented here by someone who lives here, by someone local. That's at the core of what representative democracy is. I think it's very clear Republicans in the legislature are doing this mid-decade, outside of the typical cadence of the census, because they see the numbers, and they don't like the changing numbers that they're seeing, and they're afraid of what it means. They're afraid of cities like ours. I think they're afraid of Latino and Black voters and other minority communities, and they're afraid of, over time, their agenda getting rejected in Texas. So instead of competing for our votes, they're trying to keep power on, you know, illegal technical maneuvering instead of trying to win votes. Again, the maps are absolutely unfair, and I think regardless of party affiliation or, you know, who you think should be representing our district, I think we can all agree, it should be someone from El Paso, right? It should be ourselves choosing who represents us and not somebody else. So, thank you to the representatives who sponsored this resolution and called for the special meeting. I think it's really important that the council is very loud and clear about how we feel about this, individually and collectively. It's not fair to El Paso. It's not fair to all Texans, and ultimately, it's not an equitable response to the fear that the people in power won't be able to hold on to that power longer. Thank you, Mayor.
Representative Trejo?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Representative Acevedo, Rocha, and Niño for bringing this forward. I truly support this resolution and in full support of it. Thank you.
Representative Acevedo?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to add a little bit more context. I also appreciate, Mayor, you allowing us to call for this special meeting. There were a lot of moving parts that happened in the last few days, and we were able to get this, and that's why we were able to post it as a special meeting. And, you know, I echo what my colleagues are saying today. I think that I want to give a little bit more perspective on what this could mean for us and why it's important for us to pass this resolution today. After the 2020 census, they did redistricting as they usually do, and at the time, they were also proposing this change where they were going to remove El Paso and Fort Bliss. The council of, at that point, about four years ago, passed a similar resolution, and so did El Paso County. And that really fueled our state delegation to have more ammunition to fight this, and they successfully kept the Fort Bliss and the airport. So I'm hoping that by this passing unanimously today, we'll be able to keep these important assets as part of the 16 congressional district. And I think it's important to have in El Paso and fighting for El Paso and not have somebody in the largest district in the country representing San Antonio to El Paso and 500 miles. How do you prioritize at that point, right? And just in the last few years alone, Representative Escobar has, or Congresswoman Escobar, has brought in hundreds of millions of dollars for Fort Bliss, and I'm not exaggerating when it's literally hundreds of millions of dollars. So we've seen how effective the Congresswoman has been in this position to really fight for Fort Bliss, and we need to continue making sure that we, as a council, as a city, also fight for Fort Bliss and our airport that Representative Maldonado Rocha gets to be the representative of. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Chavez?
Thank you, Mayor, and I, you know, I also appreciate this resolution coming before us today, so thank you to all the reps that brought it to us. You know, I think elections matter, and I think, you know, all of us ran nonpartisan races, but I think we can all agree that at the end of the day, our city has served best because we are present in our districts, we advocate for our districts, and we represent our districts. And that is what we are basically, you know, saying today, that we want our city to be represented here locally by someone who understands us, knows us, and knows the needs of our community. And so this is, I think, important for the future of El Paso, its growth, its potential, and other things that we are working towards achieving. And so I fully support this as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Representative Fiero?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the three reps who put this on the agenda. I think it's important that we have our voices heard and that we support local representation. When I served in the 87th session and we addressed redistricting, the committee was very open to El Paso being represented by somebody local. It was very open to somebody not representing El Paso who's living 500 miles away. It was important to the committee then, it was important to the chairman then, and it's Fort Bliss and the airport stayed in El Paso. It's mind-boggling to me that we're talking about making these decisions a few years later and turning over representation of these two very important economic drivers to somebody who's 500 miles away. So thank you, the three of you who put it on the agenda. I look forward to supporting it.
All right. And before we call the vote, Ms. Bryan, I just want to say that, first of all, I want to thank the council members that did put this on the agenda. And we just need to say it the way it is. This redistricting, it's wrong. To move these critical assets that belong to El Paso and to reassign them, you know, 500 miles away is wrong for El Paso and our community. We deserve local representation on our airport and Fort Bliss. We've already heard the amount of trade that goes through our airport, and we talked about the economic impact that Fort Bliss has on this economy. And I can tell you that that deserves to have a local voice and someone that represents us that is here in the El Paso region. So I applaud everyone that has worked on this. I applaud the ones that have given testimony and have been so vocal with this issue. And I also want to say that our state delegation that is in Austin going through this, you know, we understand that, you know, they're in a tough spot, and they're going to have a tough decision here when they come up to vote, so we stand behind them as well. So with that, Ms. Bryan, would you call for the vote?
We do have public comment, Mayor, from Ms. Turner.
Good morning, Ms. Turner.
It's morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, Council. Fully support this resolution. Now, I want to say this. What they're doing is against the law. It's a violation of the Texas Constitution, Article 3. To redistrict in the state of Texas, the law requires, it mandates, that redistricting occurs after the first, in the first legislative session after the publication of a new U.S. census. Now, no U.S. census has been published lately, and this is not a legislative session, this is a special session. Legally, they don't have a ground to stand on, but giving this party, giving this country's leadership, the U.S. Constitution and the Texas Constitution apparently don't apply to anybody, especially one way to want to do something. And I have, you know, why would we put part of our city in the district of somebody who doesn't have a common decency to show his face here, except to pick up campaign donations? And then he'll run away. I've never seen him. I've seen his staff here when they'd been invited before council, but I've never seen him. He won't show his face here. He won't come here, so why bother? I mean, the way I see it, it's a violation of the Texas Constitution, and you all should be saying not no, but hell no. That's just my position. They haven't met the constitutional requirements to do this in the state of Texas. And as my representative from District 8 pointed out, this is what the president wants. They want to fix elections. That is illegal as all get out, and they're doing it in public, and people are not being noisy enough about it. And I would suggest that you all prepare to file suit if they actually pass this, because they are violating the Texas Constitution, and you need to secure your rights. Do a lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Bryan, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Acevedo, seconded by Representative Maldonado Rocha to approve the resolution on item one. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Do we need a motion to adjourn this one?
Please.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the special meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the special meeting for Tuesday, August 17th? Anyone opposed? And the special meeting for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025 is adjourned at 11:40 a.m. Mayor, would you like to convene Mass Transit?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Good morning. This is a meeting of the El Paso Mass Transit Department Board for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. It is now 11:41 a.m. President presiding is Board Chair Johnson. Also present in council chambers are board members Chavez, Acevedo, Maldonado Rocha, Poyar Trejo, Niño, Fiero, Limón, and Canales. There is no public comment. All matters listed under the consent agenda will be considered by Mass Transit Department Board to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless separate discussion is requested by board members. Prior to the vote, members of the audience may ask questions regarding items on the consent agenda. When the vote has been taken, if an item has not been called out for separate discussion, the item has been approved. The Mass Transit Department Board may, however, reconsider any item at any time during the meeting. There is only item number two is in consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you. Motion made by Board Member Limón, seconded, seconded by Board Member Fiero, and this is to approve item number two. Let me read it into the record, and it's a resolution that the city manager be authorized to sign a marketing partner agreement between the City of El Paso and Van Wagner. Voting session is open. The voting session has closed, and the item has been approved unanimously.
Okay, let's take uh, agenda item number three.
Item number three is discussion in action to issue a purchase order for solicitation 2025-0136 camera systems, parts and service to Iris Infrared and Intelligence Sensors and A Incorporated, the sole and authorized distributor of Iris cameras, a proprietary onboard camera systems for a term of three years for an estimated amount of $2,499 and $49900 and $564.
Is there? Okay, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Any discussion on this particular item? All right, call for the vote.
Moved by Mr. Niño.
Representative Limón.
Limón, okay.
And second.
To approve item number three, motion made by Board Member Limón, seconded by Board Member Chavez.
Rocha.
Rocha. Voting session is open. Voting session is closed. And the item has been approved unanimously with Mr. Fiero not present for the vote.
Okay.
Item number four.
Yes.
Is discussion in action to authorize the issuance of a purchase order for solicitation 2025-0462 Trapeze Software and Equipment Maintenance to Trapeze Software Group Incorporated, doing business as Vontus, the sole and authorized distributor of the Transit Master and Response Master CAD and ABL software for a term of five years for an estimated amount of $2,066,911.
Okay, there's, there's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion on this agenda item? All right, hearing none. Call for the vote.
Vote. Uh, motion was made by Board Member Limón, seconded by Board Member Canales, and this is to approve item number four. Voting session is open. The voting session is open. Board Member Acevedo. Thank you, sir. And the voting session is closed, and the item has been approved unanimously with Board Member Fiero not present for the vote.
Okay, we, we need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? And the Mass Transit Department Board meeting for August 5th, 2025 is adjourned at 11:46 a.m. Thank you.
Move to reconvene the regular city council.
There's a motion and a second to reconvene the regular city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The meeting is back in session at 11:46 a.m. Council, for the, per the rules of order, no use of personal cellular devices nor personal communication should take place on the day as while the meeting is in session. Once you obtain the floor from the mayor, you will have up to 10 minutes for each debatable motion and may speak twice per item. Please speak into the microphone and refrain from side conversations while the meeting is in session. For those of you joining us through Teams, please make sure your microphones are muted to reduce any background noise. That brings us to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda will be considered by city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless separate discussion is requested by council members. Prior to the vote, members of the audience may ask questions regarding items on the consent agenda. When the vote has been taken, if an item has not been called out for separate discussion, the item has been approved. Council may, however, reconsider any item at any time during the meeting. Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Ms. Pryne. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the following revisions. Page three, item four, move to the regular agenda per Representative Acevedo. Page three, item five, move to the regular agenda per Representative Acevedo. Page three, item six, move to the regular agenda per Representative Acevedo. Page six, item 16, delete per Representative Fiero.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Ms. Pryne, call for the vote?
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Mayor Potem Chavez, seconded by Representative Limón to approve the consent agenda as revised on that motion. Call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. Mayor, would you like to take the items that would move to the regular?
Yeah, let's take item number four from the consent.
And Representative Acevedo wanted to take four, five, and six together if council is okay with that?
Sure, let's do that.
Item four is a resolution that the Director of Aviation or Designee be authorized to submit a subzone expansion application and supporting documents and coordination with taxing entities for letters of support to the U.S. Foreign Trade Zone 68 to include parcel at 13551 Montana Avenue. Item five is also a resolution that the Director of Aviation or Designee be authorized to submit a minor boundary modification application and supporting documents and coordination with taxing entities for letters of support to the U.S. Foreign Trade Zone 68 to include the parcel at 970 Camino del Rey Drive. Item six is also a resolution that the Director of Aviation or Designee be authorized to submit a minor boundary modification application and all supporting documents and coordination with taxing entities for letters of support to the U.S. Foreign Trade Zone 68 to include the parcels at 13500 Pelicano Drive.
Good morning.
Good morning. David Panko, Foreign Trade Zone Manager at the El Paso International Airport.
Representative Acevedo?
Uh, I, I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Yes. So I um, I'm very supportive of this. I just wanted to get a little bit more information on this, to have a better understanding on what our foreign trade zones are doing for the city. Do you know what the percentage of this area is for our tax base? Because I'm seeing that there's low vacancy, and we're trying to expand it because there's a lot of demand on this. So how does that affect our tax base?
Um, this affects our tax base because of the, uh, large amount of real estate. There's over 3 million square foot of real estate that is being used by foreign trade zone clients, and we're adding a lot more clients this year and next year. So that'll help expand the tax base, because I know that we want to put more tax base to commercial versus residential, so where, where foreign trade zone helps in that direction.
Percentage-wise, in, in making it, you know, the commercial residential, do you know what impact this will have on making this tax base more commercial?
I wouldn't be able to tell you a percentage on, on that, no.
If you could get me that information, I would really appreciate it.
Sure.
And then um, I was seeing that there's some monthly activity reports that the foreign trade zone provides. Are those something that we can access or, or get in understanding of what's happening there?
As far as what are the new clients coming in and how?
Yeah.
How we're moving them forward? Yes, uh, I'm sure we could provide that to you.
Okay, I, I would appreciate that. I, I, I'm trying to get a, a better understanding of what is happening here, and then I also think the public should know that there's a lot of good that's happening here. And I see that there's events that are happening, regular meetings held with clients, potential clients, um, a sponsor pays for these. So I kind of want to know more about that. I, I feel that I'm not getting a lot of that information, and I
Sure.
really love to share that with my constituents.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to sit down with you and, and spend time with you and go through it. There's just a lot going on with the foreign trade zone today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Pryne, on items four, five, and six. Any further discussion? All right, hearing unseen, then please call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Acevedo, seconded by Representative Niño to approve items four, five, and six. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. We now turn to page number nine to the first reading of ordinances.
Thank you.
These are, these are items 25 to 34.
Okay. Representative? Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Pryne, please call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Limón, seconded by alternate Mayor Potem Fiero to approve the first reading of ordinances. These are items 25 to 34. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
All right, let's take regular agenda, item number 35.
Yes, sir. Item 35 is a public hearing of an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 2.04, Boards and Commissions and Committees generally to rename and amend Section 2.04.010, remove references of excessive absences, rename the section Uniform Bylaws, and require Boards and Commissions to adopt the city's Uniform Bylaws and to amend Section 2.04.020 to update the requirements of record-keeping meeting minutes.
Okay, Representative Limón?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This is basically a cleanup, right? We've already gone through all these before and everything. Okay. Thank you very much. Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Representative Canales? Okay. Any discussion on this item number 35? All right, Ms. Pryne, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Limón, seconded by Representative Maldonado Rocha. This is to adopt the ordinance on item 35. There's no public comment. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. Representative Niño not present.
All right, let's take 37?
Item 36.
Six, 36.
Is a public hearing of an ordinance repealing ordinance 008961, which enacted the City Accessibility Advisory Committee, and repealing ordinance 017082, ordinance 011469, which amended the City Accessibility Advisory Committee.
Okay, is there? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on item number 36? All right, hearing unseen, Ms. Pryne, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Limón, seconded by alternate Mayor Potem Fiero, and this is to adopt the ordinance on item 36. There is no public comment. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. Item 37 is a public hearing of an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 3.04, property taxes by amending Section 3.04.040 exemption residence homestead to increase the ad valorem property tax exemption for individuals who qualify under the current code.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this item?
Approve.
Motion second. Any discussion? Robert, did you want to?
No. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. So again, this is the item that we've talked about several times. So this is increasing the exemption for the over 65 and disabled from current $42,500 up to $45,000. And again, on average, that increases an $18 additional property tax savings, which would bring the total to about $342 on the average tax bill.
Okay.
$342 a year.
On an annual basis.
On an annual basis.
Representative Chavez, did you want to?
No, I, I know there's a presentation in the backup. Thank you, Mayor. And I didn't know if it would be useful for the community to see that. I know we've already discussed it during the budget, but if anybody would want to see it.
If you don't mind, can we go through it?
Thank you, Mayor.
So again, this item is to amend, an ordinance amending Chapter 3.04. And again, this is a section related specifically to the residence homestead exemption for over 65 and the disabled. And again, as we've talked about several times over the last few months, this would increase the exemption from the current $42,500 up to $45,000. Uh, just a little bit of history on this particular exemption that the city council does provide. And so this is again a city exemption. Uh, amounts are controlled by the city council. Uh, you see, it was created back in 2006, started at $30,000 amount, was increased up to $40,000 in January of 2015, another increase in 2021. And again, this is an additional $2,500 that would be effective for 2025. Uh, looking at the number of individuals who have either the over 65 or the disabled exemption, uh, again, as I presented last week, total with the certified values that we received, updated information, currently 57,240 homesteads have either the over 65 or disabled exemption. Uh, you'll see that increase from the prior year, about 2,300 roughly. Um, and again, we'll make sure to get the word out, make sure that everybody's eligible, can apply for these exemptions. The application process is through the appraisal district. So again, this uh, application is not done on the city's website, but you can access the information on the appraisal district's website to be able to take advantage of this. Uh, we look at the actual impact of the city as far as property taxes. So this is essentially the cost to provide the exemptions. For the over 65 and disabled, you'll see last year was 16.6 million with this increase and the increase in the number of participants in the program, going up to $18.3 million, again, of property tax relief for over 65 and disabled. As we look to the average tax bill, again, information I presented last week, um, you'll see essentially exemption equates to about a 20% discount on the average tax bill. Uh, so looking at that $221,000 average value for a home, if you have either the over 65 or disabled exemption, again, that'll bring that down on the average tax bill by about $342, as I mentioned. Uh, again, equivalent to about a 20% discount on the average tax bill. And then again, the final requested action is to amend this ordinance, or this ordinance will amend this section, again, increasing the exemption to $45,000. Uh, it will be effective January of 2025. So again, it's based on tax year, and so this would be essentially reflected immediately. And so when those tax bills are made, mailed out in October, they would see that increase on the city's portion of the tax bill.
Okay. Representative Niño?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Robert, for this presentation. One quick question. Earlier this year, I was able to host a property tax workshop for my district. I think we all were able to do that. And a constituent did reach out and ask me for this purpose or this exemption. Individuals don't have to reapply, right? It automatically goes in?
No, they do not have to reapply.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, because I know that, so my constituents had reached out to ask. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further discussion on this agenda item? All right, Ms. Pryne, we had a motion, second. Please call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Limón, seconded by alternate Mayor Potem Fiero to adopt the ordinance on item 37. There's no public comment on that motion. Call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
All right, let's take item 38.
Item 38 is discussion in action on the transition period for the internal audit function during the recruitment for the chief internal auditor. This item was placed by Representatives Acevedo and Chavez.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, discussion, Representative Acevedo?
Thank you, Mayor. I put this item um with Representative Chavez on the agenda. We're both members of FOAC, and as Mr. Edmundo-
We're both members of FOAC, and as Mr. Edmundo Calderón, um, his last day with the city was this past Friday, and he will be with us, um, on vacation until October tenth, so he will not actually be at the city anymore. Um, during the day-to-day, he'll be available for, um, any guidance that we may need through that time, but his day-to-day activities are, are over at this point. So this item is gonna be part one of two. Uh, this one is to discuss the transition period until we find, uh, a new permanent replacement, and in two weeks, we'll have another item to begin the search for that permanent replacement. So as we were talking to our legal counsel about this, we, we saw this as two, two parts in terms of the internal audit function at this point. There's the operational part, and there's the governance part. And Ms. Mack, um, has offered to help with the operational, you know, proving time cards, having, um, that day-to-day operational task completed by someone in her office. And then the governance aspect will land, um, me as FOAC chair, and then the FOAC also, to make sure that the work is continuing to move forward. At this point, there are existing structures that exist right now in the internal audit function, as such as the deputy internal auditor, uh, a manager, and other positions. So we wanna make sure that we just keep that existing structure intact and, um, move forward with, with this item. Well, the, the big thing here was to make sure that the internal audit function remains completely independent. And with FOAC having the governance aspect of that, there, there will be independence guaranteed. We are in the midst of planning our next audit plan for fiscal year twenty-six, and then, um, we are working through our existing internal audit plan right now. So I don't see any of that work to, um, be, um, delayed at any point. There are audits that are in the works right now, that'll move forward, and then, uh, from a governance perspective, we'll make sure that the independence stays, uh, with, with the internal audit function.
Ms. Prime, does this require action?
It was posted for action.
Yes.
I'm not sure what the, the motion reads.
Yeah, I, I could clarify it. Um, I, I think, let me, come back to me, and I'll, I'll, I'll let the other speakers.
Representative Canales?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I, I had a similar question. The, there was a motion to approve. I, I don't know what action the motion was to approve. Okay, are we allowed to have debate without a motion on the floor?
I don't think so.
And I think the motion is to approve the recommendations for the transition period.
But I'll, I'll. Ms. Neiman, can you help with?
Yeah, there's nothing.
There's, there's recommendations that I said. They're not in a motion, so I'm asking Ms. Neiman right now. I, I said quite a bit of recommendations, actually.
So pursuant to the charter, the, the chief internal auditor is appointed by the council, and the chief internal audit function reports operationally to the FOAC. It is my understanding, based on Representative Acevedo's discussion, that, that the prior, this, this past couple of weeks, the council announced that as a result of the internal auditor's retirement, the council will be appointing an interim. However, it doesn't appear that the council wishes to move in that direction, or maybe Representative Acevedo is, based on the charter language, because there's no chief internal auditor, the function will not be reporting to the, the Financial Oversight Advisory Committee. So there's a conversation that Representative Acevedo wishes to have about what to do in the meantime, until you have a chief internal auditor whose function is to report operationally to the FOAC. Uh, Representative Acevedo, if, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the motion would be, um, to direct Ms. Mack to, to assist in the function of the chief internal auditor function in the meantime, while you all appoint, uh, the next chief internal auditor. I believe that is what you seek to, to do, sir.
I, I think what I'm trying to do here is make sure that the operational part of the day-to-day is with the city manager for now, for this transition period, but the governance stays with FOAC, because I wanna make sure that we're ensuring the independence here.
Correct. So, so as I, as I stated just a few minutes ago, per the charter, the chief internal audit function reports operationally to FOAC. So the function itself, right, what happens as a result of the auditor function is gonna remain with FOAC. There is currently no chief internal audit, auditor, which is appointed by the council. It is my understanding that Representative Acevedo, you were seeking to clarify for the public that there will not be an interim named, but that the function, operationally, the day-to-day operations about payroll, employee issues, who's in, who's out, has to have some sort of lead that is not the chief internal auditor person right now.
Yeah, so I.
That was the conversation.
I think what I'm hearing is the administrative functions will report to, uh, the city manager.
Yeah, I think that's.
Anyone that needs to take time off, uh, signing time cards, it wouldn't report to the FOAC.
Correct, since that, that's not necessarily the function of FOAC.
Understood.
The governance structure and the legislative function of FOAC will remain at FOAC through the chief internal audit function.
Okay.
Which happens during the Financial Oversight Advisory Committee meetings.
Got it. Okay.
So I, I move to not name an interim chief internal auditor and move the operational administrative functions of the department to the city manager's office until a new chief internal auditor is named, and keep the governance with the Financial Oversight Audit Committee. Is that okay?
Is that something we can do, Ms.?
Yes, so, so remember, you're not amending the charter by this motion. The charter doesn't change. What we're addressing is the fact that the charter has a provision that says the chief internal auditor is appointed by council, and he or she performs various functions. So all you're doing is naming a lead in regards to the administrative functions of the office and how those will be handled in the meantime. There's no need to amend or make mention of the fact that the function remains with FOAC. That can't change, uh, as a result of the vacancy in the chief internal audit function.
So, Ms. Prime, it, it says discussion in action on the transition period. So are we allowed to have discussion on this?
Yes, you, you're allowed to, to debate the motion that Representative Acevedo just read.
But he read a different one.
Yeah, and I didn't get a second on it.
Was there a second?
No, there was no second. It died.
So Representative Canales, you still, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, um, am curious as to the rationale for not appointing an interim, uh, to carry out the, the function while the search happens.
Okay.
You know, I would ask the, the authors of this item to.
Sure.
Uh, address that.
Representative Chavez or Representative Acevedo, you wanna comment on this?
So I, I think the, the idea behind this is we might have people in the internal audit department apply for this position, and giving somebody, uh, leg up on this would not be fair. We really wanna have an aggressive timeline to ap- appoint a new auditor, and we're hoping that we could have somebody by October at the latest. And so we thought that with the deputy being in place right now and keeping the same structure all the way down, they could serve as the lead to liaison with the FOAC until the new person is permanently named. We are also in the midst of finalizing the Weaver Report, which will be finalized, um, rather soon, and we wanna make sure that, um, we have the new internal audit, or look over that and start implementing it from day one.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, is there, is there, um, I, I know it was said there would be another item brought forward for a search. I was not aware of another item coming forward. Is there any detail about what that search would entail, whether that's hiring a search firm, conducting an internal search?
So. So HR is currently putting a package together. The idea is, and I don't know how much I could talk about that, 'cause I don't know if we're posted for that, but the idea is that they'll be meeting with us within the next two weeks with FOAC members. If any other council member wants to meet with them to give input on this, then I encourage you to reach out to Mary Wiggins about this. But, um, the, the idea would not be to hire a search firm. HR has hired about twenty positions that are very high level over the last few months, so they are, are putting together all of that information. I have not seen any of that information, but we were discussing that we would put it on the next council agenda to make sure that we are moving this process forward as fast as possible.
Representative Canales?
All right, yeah, understood. Um, and, and I'm not saying at all that I disagree with that method. Uh, you know, I, I don't know for sure. I, I'd like to evaluate a little further, but I, I will caution that the hiring of a, the internal auditor for the charter is the function of the city council and not just the FOAC. And so I'm, I'm concerned to hear that staff is working without direction on a, on a plan for hiring, uh, when they weren't given that direction by the city council.
Well, I, I think more than anything, we're gonna give them that direction, but they wanna have something to present to us. But if you don't wanna do that, and you just wanna put something and then delay the process until September's starting, then we can do that. It, it was just to have a good package to present to council on that day.
I understand. I, I still would just advise that the, the function is a function of the council.
And, and, and we, we completely.
We agree, absolutely, yeah.
And so. Let me start the sentence again. Uh, I would advise that it's, it's a function of the council to hire, um, the, the internal, the chief internal auditor. And so, uh, I think that direction should come from the council before there's other action taken. Um, I, I, if this is posted to, you know, I think in a way that allows that action to be taken today, uh, that is part of the transition. Uh, obviously, I don't think that we could, uh, direct specifically the hiring of a particular firm or anything like that. Uh, but I think general direction is something that the council could give today, but it, it warrants, in my opinion, a much more robust discussion than, you know, it's coming in two weeks and we're gonna take this interim plan in, in the meanwhile. Um, I, I would very much have liked to have seen, uh, information in the, in the backup documentation. Every field is blank on the department, on the, the summary form. Uh, and so the, this is, I think catching me, I, I would imagine some others, uh, by surprise, because this isn't something that the council has discussed moving forward with. And again, I'm not saying that I disagree with, you know, that, that necessarily, uh, that, that outcome. I, I don't know that that will be the wrong outcome if that's what happens, but it should be a process that's driven by the, the whole council, since it's our function.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I totally agree on this. When I looked at this, it was, it's, it's not clear enough to me. My concern, Mayor, is that to not appoint an interim, the problem with not appointing someone is that this period could last for a very, very long time, and then we have the lack of leadership within the department. So I am for the appointment of an interim auditor and let things fall where, where they fall. Hmm, I heard the representative state that, that it wouldn't be fair if someone within the department applied for it. I, I think that in essence, we would be, uh, perhaps writing someone off with the experience, with the knowledge. And overall, the interview committee or the interview team, um, search group is going to make that possible decision to weed them, and then bring them to us, and then we make that decision ultimately. So, thank you, Mayor.
Representative Chavez?
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you to Ms. Neiman. I appreciate the comments from Representative Canales, as well as Representative Limon. Um, in, it was, um, you know, in discussions with Representative Acevedo, um, Ms. Neiman, it, it was, uh, we spoke about, you know, this possibility of appointing a lead instead of an interim, um, because of, you know, particular reasons that, that we felt, uh, were, were appropriate at this time. Um, we do not expect this, uh, to take as long as, um, Ms. Limon stated, hope, we're hoping, because it's such an important position at the city, it's such a vital position for the city, that we do appoint someone fairly soon. Um, and that, that is why we, we, um, spoke about the possibility of doing it internally, so that the process could be expedited a little bit more. But we do not wanna overlook the fact that it is a very important position, and we do need to be very, um, mindful of the fact that this position, we hope, will be for the long term. And so that is very important. It's also very important to just reiterate that, um, Ms. Mack, um, seeing, overseeing the, the, you know, the, the people that work in this department will be for an operations or administrative purpose only, um, that they will still be completely independent, and, um, that, you know, we will be, uh, drafting language, you know, in the future for, for other specific reasons that will relate more to, um, the hiring process of the next auditor. Uh, we don't want anybody to, uh, feel overlooked in this process, and of course, we wanna continue transparency, because that is important to us. Um, transparency is important in general, especially for the FOAC, right? Because that, uh, instills trust in our community, and that's something that's very important for us. So again, you know, we thought Ms. Mack would be appropriate in terms of overlooking, overseeing the, um, administrative part of it, but she would not be, definitely not be overseeing any functionality or, or audits or anything like that particular to that department. We wanna make sure, and we wanna reiterate, that this department would continue being independent. Thank you.
Representative Fierro?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I absolutely agree that Ms. Mack should, should be the administrator of the department till we, till we get to the next step. But I agree with Representative Canales and Representative Limon, that we really need to have a presentation to council as a whole, and to what the options are for the next steps. Um, do we want internal? Do we want an external company? Do we want, you know, those are all options that this body as a whole should have a debate, and should, and we could all agree a hundred percent on, on whatever the first issue is, but, or, or, or option is. But I think as a body as a whole, this is our responsibility. We need to, to discuss it and make that decision. But I wholeheartedly believe and, and think, and I hope that, that, um, Ms. Mack is the administrator of the department. I don't think that that department should, should resp- uh, respond to FOAC as, um, as a committee. And I, I think that, that, um, Representative Acevedo was absolutely right. The, it, the functions of the continuing, the auditing, et cetera, et cetera, are gonna, are gonna happen. And, and FOAC will keep us abreast of that. But as far as, um, our next steps, I, I truly believe we need a presentation to council as a whole.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Representative Acevedo?
Thank you, Mayor, and, you know, hearing what, um, everybody has said, I, I posted this language based on the legal advice that we got, so it wasn't intentional to leave it blank. I don't, I don't wanna create any, um, narrative out there that this was just done without any care in the world. This was literally the language that we were advised to post, so that's why it was posted. And now we're having this, this conversation. And so I, I hear you on the direction on the HR part of it. We, um, we had been talking about it, this, and this was the option that was presented, so that's why I said this was part one of two, and in two weeks, we would have that. But if Ms. Neiman allows us to have direction, um, for HR or the city manager and city attorney on how to proceed on a search with the language that's posted today, I would defer to you.
If I'm understanding correctly, you, you wanna use the language to direct staff to take some measure in terms of?
Yeah, I, I was thinking to present options on a search for a chief internal auditor.
Right. If, if the council chooses to make that, that, uh, motion today, you, you can provide us that, that direction. Again, and the, the intent, based on my conversations, was that you wanted. Again, the intent, based on my conversations, was that you wanted to have a conversation in regards to what the public had been told in regards to an interim position. And the language allows for you to have a action about what you want to do in the transition period, which could include coming back with a proposal on recruitment.
Okay. And so the last motion I made didn't get a second. The first motion was not really a motion because we don't know where it was, so there's no motion at this point, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I want to attempt to make a motion based on what everybody has said today. I move to not name an interim chief internal auditor and move administrative operational functions to the city manager and keep governance intact with the FOAC until a new chief internal auditor is named. I further move to direct the city manager and city attorney to present options on a search for a chief internal auditor.
There's a motion and a second. We have discussion. Representative Canales? Motion, second, discussion. Can we hear that motion back?
I don't have it in writing, sir.
Okay.
I'll send it over to you via Teams, Ms. Prynn.
Thank you. The motion is to not name an interim chief internal auditor and move administrative/operational functions to the city manager and keep governance intact with the FOAC until a new chief internal auditor is named. I further move to direct the city manager and city attorney to present options for a search for a chief internal auditor.
Representative Canales?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend that motion to add the words "at this time after" to not appoint a chief, an interim chief internal auditor.
That's fine. Okay. We have amendment to the main motion and a second. Representative Nino?
I'm okay, Mayor.
You're good? Okay. Are we going to Ms. Turner now, Ms. Prynn?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Ms. Turner. You have three minutes.
I have a serious beef with this. First off, FOAC overstepped its authority. As Representative Canales said, they didn't instruct anybody to do anything. It's council who instructs staff, not FOAC. You're jumping council approval. You've substituted yourself for city council. I find that offensive, greatly offensive. Now, I know, what I don't understand is, well, actually I do, now I actually know the background, but you have run away a man of integrity and honesty, and you want to put someone in this place who will turn a blind eye to council members or city managers or whatever, using taxpayer monies for their own personal benefits. This had never been brought up. We still have our internal auditor. Now, you can only serve one boss. You can't serve two. So either Ms. Mack is going to run the internal auditor department, or the internal auditor is going to run it and be responsible. You can't split it up. You can't put it in. I know that. Any of you who have been in business know that. You can't have two bosses because you can't get anything done. As far as transparency, that's a joke. It is a complete and total jerk, joke. I expect the internal auditor to have integrity. You're going after and look for somebody who will turn a blind eye to misbehavior and illegal actions of council or anybody else in government. That's not what I, as a citizen, want. That's not what the people out here in El Paso want. As far as that concerned, the entire FOAC board should be reappointed to somebody else. They have overstepped their authority. They've gone too far. And let's talk about what's posted on the agenda. We're talking about stuff that's not posted. There is zero backup. There is a phone number to call, but there is nothing to let the citizens know what's going to happen here today. It's a complete and total BS lie to the citizens. You've just put this big curtain up. It's behind closed doors. So I'm going to ask you to postpone this item for, until such time as council can put it on the agenda and council can start directing staff to do the proper thing and not have FOAC come in here and tell council how we're going to run things. That's what, that's got to come to an end.
You reached the three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Representative Nino?
Thank you, Mayor. And just for clarification, the FOAC hasn't taken any direction in regards of this item. That's why we're having this item, so that we could have this conversation, correct? Okay. I just, I asked Ms. Prynn if she could read the motion one more times for clarification, please?
Yes, sir, and I also emailed it to council just a few minutes ago. And the motion reads, "I move to not name an internal chief auditor," the amendment reads, "at this time," and move administrative/operational functions to the city manager and keep governance intact with the FOAC until a new chief internal auditor is named. I further move to direct the city manager and city attorney to present options on a search for a chief internal auditor.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Prynn, for that. And just for clarification, the city council will still be involved in the process. We will still get the present, we're going to get a presentation of the options, and the council's still going to be able to have input in the entire search and selecting the next auditor, correct? Yes, okay. I just want to clarify that, and I would appreciate, you know, when all of this starts happening and once we do select a search firm to meet with all the council members to see what the priorities are, and I think this is the first step of initiating all of that. So, thank you.
Representative Procha?
Sorry, just one more thing. Sorry, thank you, Mayor. Just one more thing. And in addition to all the steps that we'll be taking as a body for council, we're also going to be using Weaver as guidance for that search. So, that's my understanding. Is that correct? No, no, no. Not for guidance. We're going to make the decisions, right?
Yeah, I think what you're saying is that the report will be what is guiding us in terms of, you know...
What we look for.
Changes, questions, coming up with stuff like that. And the report will be finalized very soon.
Right.
Representative Canales?
I think we have the amendment on the floor and our comments have to be limited to that until we're back to the main motion.
Okay.
And my comments, I requested comment on the main motion.
Okay. Any additional comments on this amended motion? Hearing then, Ms. Prynn?
Yes, sir. So the motion was made by Representative Canales, seconded by Mayor Protem Chavez, and this is to amend the main motion to insert the words "at this time after I move to not name internal chief." I move to not name an internal chief auditor. The amendment is to insert the words "at this time."
At this time, correct. And there was a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this particular amendment? Representative Canales? I still, okay. All right, Ms. Prynn?
Yes, sir. The voting session is open. Council on the amendment. In the voting session, and the motion passes 6 to 1. Representative Limon voting nay. Representative Boyar Trejo not present.
Okay, let's take the... Representative Canales?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, on the main motion. I do just want to make it, be clear, I think it invites a lot of questions from the public, and I understand, I think it was just a misspeak, but Weaver is the external firm that conducted the assessment of the internal audit function and not any individual person. They're not advising us on this transition. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And it's not part of the scope of work that we hired them for to make recommendations on personnel or anything else?
That is correct.
Okay. Just to make sure we put any question of that to bed with the public, I do have one more amendment to make, apologies, Mayor, and that is to add the words "to include internal and external search options after," to present options.
There's a motion and a second to amend the original motion? Discussion on this item?
Just to clarify, Mayor, yeah, at the end, at the end of all of the language. So at the end of "to present options on a search for a chief internal auditor," to include internal and external search options.
You got that, Ms. Prynn? Just at the end?
To present options on internal and external search.
External.
At the end. So to present options on a search for a chief internal auditor, to include internal and external search options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, any discussions on this amended motion? Okay, Ms. Prynn, let's call for this vote.
Yes, sir. So the motion was made by Representative Canales, seconded by alternate Mayor Protem Fierro, and this is to insert the words "to include internal and external options" at the end of the motion.
I'm sorry. Representative Limon? Can you read the whole thing, please? Can we read the motion? The amended one?
The amendment is to include the words "to include internal and external options" at the end of the motion that reads, "I move to not name an internal chief internal auditor at this time and move administrative/operational functions to the city manager and keep governance intact with the FOAC until a new chief internal auditor is named. Further move to direct the city manager and city attorney to present options on a search for a chief internal auditor to include internal and external options."
Yes. Yeah, Representative Nino?
Thank you, Mayor. So when we're talking about presenting options, internal and external, we're saying we would be getting a presentation of internal and external candidates, were?
No.
No. Can we...
This is just options for methods to conduct the search. Perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on the amendment? All right, Ms. Prynn, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Canales, seconded by alternate Mayor Protem Fierro, and this is to amend the motion to insert the words "to include internal and external options" at the end of the motion. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes 6 to 1. Representative Limon voting nay. Representative Boyar Trejo not present.
Okay. And before, now we've got to take the main motion. Before we do that, I want to say that I appreciate Representative Acevedo and Chavez posting this because you have to go through the discussion to get to where we landed, and I certainly don't think staff should be reporting to council members. So I agree that, you know, in the interim for operational and administrative functions, that staff needs to report to the city manager in this scenario. But again, it had to have a discussion to get to where we got today. So is there any discussion on the main motion? And Ms. Prynn, do you, I know you've been reading it, but would you read the main motion, please?
Absolutely. So the motion on the floor is to move to not name an internal chief internal auditor at this time. Yes, sir. It's to move to not name an interim chief internal auditor at this time and move administrative/operational functions to the city manager and keep governance intact with the FOAC until a new chief internal auditor is named. Further move to direct the city manager and city attorney to present options on a search for a chief internal auditor to include internal and external options.
Correct. Okay, any discussions on this main motion? All right, here, Representative Nino, yeah?
Thank you, Mayor. And just again, for the benefit of the public, FOAC has not spoken about this. FOAC has not taken action, so this is the first initial conversation that we're having. I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Representative Chavez?
Thank you. And to echo what Representative Nino said, just to remind the public that we cannot discuss these things either through email or in our offices in person because that would be breaking quorum. So we have to be very careful to have these discussions in public, again, in an effort to increase transparency and so that everything is on record on what we're discussing. Thank you.
Very good. Yep. Representative Acevedo?
And just to that, the only conversations have been more about what to post on the agenda with our legal counsel, and that's what I had, I had that conversation. And so we were looking at this meeting and the next meeting, and I think the discussion today got us to a better place. I appreciate the discussion.
Yep. Representative Limon?
Yes, Mayor. How many members are on FOAC?
Four.
Four. And two had discussion on this, not the other two. And they've made it very clear that they had no discussion on this. I am still very, very concerned about not appointing an interim auditor for this position. For that reason, I will vote no on it. Thank you.
Okay. You got it. Mrs. Prynn, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. So the motion was made by Representative Acevedo, seconded by Mayor Protem Chavez, and this is to approve the motion as revised. On that motion, call for the vote. In the voting session, and that motion passes 6 to 1. Representative Limon voting nay. Representative Boyar Trejo not present.
Ms. Prynn, before we take item number 39, I'm going to ask council, would they entertain a 15-minute recess?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to recess a city council meeting for 15 minutes. All in favor? Anyone opposed? And the meeting is in recess at 12:37 PM for 15 minutes.
One five, five zero. One five. There's something going on here. There's something going on here that you can't smell. This is, this is, closed doors. This is a conspiracy. This is not transparent. How often have you seen the upset like this? Never. Not like this. He's never got time for that. He's never got time for that. You didn't even go for it on the agenda. You called for something that wasn't even close, that was not even a backup. Nothing. Talk about disrespecting the citizens.
Welcome back.
Counsel, is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second to reconvene the regular city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the meeting is back in session at 12:56 PM. We're on page number 12, item 39. And item 39 is discussion in action on the award of solicitation 2025-0009 McCray Shared Path Phase 1 and Phase 2 to Martinez Brothers Contractors LLC for a total estimated amount of $3,129,157.09. The project will consist of construction of a shared use path from Montwood Drive to Montana Avenue. The proposed improvements include demolition, concrete curb, ADA-compliant curb ramps, improvements to pedestrian crossings at intersections, irrigated landscaping with amenities, and pavement markings and signs.
Second.
All right. Can we see the presentation, please? Why can't you tell you're getting out of this one easy, huh?
While he's bringing up that presentation, I'll just go over the procurement side of it.
Okay.
So, this was a low bid procurement for McCray Shared Youth Path Phase 1 and Phase 2. There were 39 views online. Six bids were received, all from local suppliers. No protests received for this requirement. And like I said, we are recommending award to Martinez Brothers LLC, the lowest responsive responsible bidder.
Okay.
Good afternoon, American Council. Joaquin Rodriguez, Director of Grant-Funded Programs with Capital Improvements. This project is the McCray Shared Use Path Phase 1 and Phase 2. Next slide. The project's scope, as mentioned earlier, is a construction of a shared use path from Montwood Drive to Montana Avenue along McCray. The proposed improvements include demolition of some existing sidewalk, ADA-compliant curb ramps, irrigated landscaping with amenities, and pavement markings and signs. Next slide, please. Project details, again, McCray Boulevard is the location for this. Districts 3. There is South Terminus right at the border of District 3 and 7. Total budget for this award is $3,129,157.09. This is a federally funded project as part of the Transportation Alternative Set-Aside Funds issued by the state of Federal Highway Administration through the state of Texas. And our funding split for this project is 80-20, with 20% coming from local government funds. Here is the proposed cross-section of the shared use path. Essentially, what residents will see is a 12-to-14-foot shared use path within the existing right-of-way on the southbound side of McCray, again, from Montwood up to Montana. Here is a plan view, sort of, of the typical section that you'll see. You'll see that the path does meander from, you know, having a landscape buffer to being directly adjacent to the roadway at some of the intersections. This is due to existing utilities, some existing stormwater structures, as well as other encroachments within the right-of-way. This is some of the proposed landscaping, again, focused on desert and native plants with low water requirements as much as possible. Next slide. Continuing on with some of the landscaping. Go ahead, next slide, please. This project is split into two phases. That is due to the funding that is being used on this project. So, Phase 1 is funded through fiscal year 25 Transportation Alternative Funds. Phase 1 is from Montwood up to Album. Next slide, please. Phase 2 continues the project from Album up to Montana, and these are fiscal year 26 Transportation Alternative Funds. Next slide, please. Here are some of the existing conditions. IT, you can just scroll through these quickly. Existing conditions in Phase 2. Project costs, again, construction cost estimated for this award is $3.129 million. We expect construction to last seven months, and access to all properties will be maintained open at all times. Derek went over the procurement summary earlier, but here's just a recap of that. And finally, our recommendation is to award the construction contract to Martinez Brothers Contractors LLC in the amount of $3,129,157.9. We do hope to start this project in the summer, likely after the holidays in January. Once we go through the contract execution phase, that'll put us right up against the holidays, so a lot of times it makes sense to just wait until January to kick that off, hoping to finish construction fall of '26.
Perfect. Representative Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. And thank you, Joaquin, for the explanation and the presentation today. Can you tell me, how long have the constituents been waiting for this?
So this project, we applied for this project in 2022. Had a public meeting back in 2024 regarding this project. But the idea of a shared use path along McCray has been something that representatives from District 7 and 3 have been asking for for quite some time. Can't give you an exact year, but there has been, you know, a request for this since before my time at the city, for sure.
Thank you, Joaquin. I ask because I understand that it's been about three years. And I know constituents from the Neighborhood Association around Eastwood are expecting, they're really looking forward to this shared use path. Because as you can see from the pictures that are provided in this presentation, it really needs it. It's becoming somewhat of an eyesore down that street. And Eastwood High School, as well as Scottsdale Elementary, which is where, you know, they're at the end and in between these projects, have been renovated. And so I feel like especially the people that have this proposed shared use path behind their properties are really looking forward to it. So thank you for the project and bringing it forth. And I look forward to seeing this start in the winter of, or January of '26. Thank you, Joaquin.
Representative Piero?
Thank you, Mayor. Joaquin, what happens if we did not award this today?
So our award today is based on our procurement process that's in place today. Not awarding this today, we would need to coordinate with TechDOT and Federal Highway and see what that looks like. But there would be a risk to those federal funds if we aren't able to move forward with this award.
So there would be a potential of us losing the funding?
Potentially, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Representative Limon?
Bless you. Thank you, Mayor. When you look at the entire McCray to Montana, McCray from Montana to Montwood is a certain distance. If you take it further and you go from Montwood to, you could even take it as far as Wedgewood, Wedgewood, it's less than half the distance. And I'm really disappointed that someone didn't think of this as being a complete project, that two-thirds of this is going to be finished and it's going to look really nice. And one-third is going to be left the way it is. I spoke on behalf of this project when I served on council 12 years ago. And here I come back only to find that it's only going to be done two-thirds of the way. Whenever we do resurfacing, whenever we do any kind of a project, it is always the most difficult thing to tell your constituents. Yeah, the project ends in front of your house or next door to your neighbor, and you don't get the resurfacing. That is always the hardest thing to do. And so knowing the huge traffic conditions at Eastwood High School, and then coming down on the East Ridge and Desert Ridge, both backing into that area, those are going to remain the same. And yeah, our constituents ask, when is this going to be done? So the response is going to be, it's only going to be done two-thirds of the way. Because the entire project, the entire project to do McCray could have been done if someone had been a little bit more focused in looking at this district. So, and you probably weren't even here, Joaquin, when we discussed this many years ago. But my ask to you is that as we look for new funding in the upcoming year or years, that please take a look at this so that we can have a completed project, rather than one that's really not completed. It's going to be very difficult, very difficult for the constituents to look out there and see all the work on one portion of it and then not on the other. That was one of our biggest concerns when Montwood was resurfaced, and we were able to get it all the way through. And the landscaping is really very nice and very complete. So it's just an ask. Please keep District 7 into consideration so we can finish this project.
Absolutely. And I'll assure you that when we look at these projects, we do look at them holistically. In this case, the amount of available funds is really limited to what TechDOT has put out in their project call. That's why you'll see this project split into two phases. What was available for FY '25 and FY '26, we've essentially maxed that out with these two phases. What I will say, earlier today, I emailed all of you a list of the projects that we have submitted to the MPO for consideration. You'll see that the McCray Shared Use Path from Montwood South to I-10 is included in that request from the MPO. We've asked that those funds be made available to the city in 2029. Ultimately, this is all, you know, up to the MPO, where they put those funds and what years projects fit into. But that's the request that we've made. Right now, our cost for shared use path projects is about $2 million per mile. Depending on, you know, the landscaping, the demolition involved, there's huge differences there. But as other funding opportunities come up, because we have created this connection from Montwood to Montana, we'll definitely explore finishing that connection. We've made a lot of really good progress on shared use paths and trail facilities that are running east-west, you know, making that county to county line connection. But something we've identified on my team right now is that some of those north-south connections are missing. McCray is one of the first really significant north-south connections that we're making, so completing that is definitely a priority for us.
And that's certainly good news. I hope, con el favor de Dios, that four years from now, we'll have this discussion and that we'll be able to move forward with it. I remember distinctly hearing that as a council member, today we ran out the checks for the project to be completed for eight and 10 years away. So maybe we'll be here at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Any other discussion on this item? All right, here in 19, Ms. Prine, we had a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Maldonado Rocha, seconded by Representative Canales. And this is to award the solicitation on item 39. Representative Trejo, would you like to vote on this item? It's item 39, the solicitation for the shared path on McCray. Okay, in the voting session. And the motion passes 5 to 1. Representative Limon voting nay.
Okay. Ms. Prine, let's take item number 40.
Yes, sir. Item 40 is discussion in action on a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement for professional services between the City of El Paso and HAF Associates for the development of a 10-year master plan for the Parks and Recreation Department in a total contract amount not to exceed $577,300 and a 12 to 14-month term.
All right, is there a motion to approve this one?
Motion to approve, second.
All right. Good afternoon, Pablo.
Good afternoon, Mayor Johnson. Good afternoon, city representatives.
You have a presentation for us, right?
Yes, sir.
Let's take a look.
Okay, I'm so happy to be here, basically because we've been waiting for this moment for the past couple of months. And we know the importance that Parks and Recreation Department, it's for the quality of life for the City of El Paso residents. So now we get the opportunity to work on our next vision for the next 10 years for the park system in El Paso. So with that said, we're going to be working very hard the next 12 to 14 months to bring the best possible product, realistic and transparent to our constituents and to the City of El Paso. So with that said, I would like to introduce and thank my team for everything that they're doing. And leading this project is our Parks Planning and Development Manager, Carla Chavez. And also let me thank our consultants that are actually here to help us present this. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Carla Chavez, and I'm with the Parks and Recreation Department. So as Pablo mentioned, we're eager to start with the master plan process. The master plan is a comprehensive planning document that will guide the future of the park system. I would like to point out that the park system is composed of parkland, community centers, senior centers, sports centers, and aquatics facilities. Next slide, please. So the Parks and Recreation Master Plan aligns with strategic goal number four. And this is an overview of the solicitation process. So the request for a statement of qualifications was issued on January of this year. We received five proposals. Those proposals were evaluated. In March, the notifications on rankings were sent to the interested parties. On April, we received the first cost proposal from the selected consultant. We negotiated the cost from between April and May. And today, we are presenting the selected consultant, the scope of work, the project timeline, and the cost. So the selected consultant is HAF. HAF is an employee-owned Texas corporation, one of the nation's leading planning firms. They have completed Parks and Recreation Master Plan for more than 100 communities. They also developed the current Parks and Recreation Master Plan for the city. And they also completed in 2019 the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for El Paso County. So they're here with me. And at this point, I will hand over the presentation. They will explain the scope of work and the project timeline.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Ilda Capricioso, I'm with HAF Associates. Really excited to be here in El Paso. Excited to get the opportunity to work with your fantastic Parks and Recreation staff, get to know your community, your residents, learn from them, as well as listen to their desires and needs for the next 10 years of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So I just want to cover very quickly here the scope of work. So there are about six items in the scope of work, and these just outline how we organize the project. So our project initiation and organization is really, our first several months of the project, or first couple of months of the project, we'll work with staff to make sure that we have a project work plan, and that will help inform the rest of our project moving forward. We'll go through a request for information and data collection process with your staff and meet with your staff and talk to them about the general inventory of Parks and Recreation and other items like that. One key component to the scope of work, of course, is the community engagement and outreach. Work with your media specialists, as well as your PIO and park staff, and make sure that we develop a public engagement plan that really focuses on gathering input from the community. Next slide. And then the core of the scope of work really is the long-range plan elements, where we go in and we do an assessment of about 100 different parks in the inventory of the Parks and Recreation system. We'll look at the state of the existing system, as well as evaluate the needs that are coming out of the community and analyze that, identify any trends or opportunities that we might see from the community. Through that, all of that will inform the plan recommendations and develop potential projects or other strategies to help improve the Parks and Recreation Agency here in El Paso. And then finally, all of that is put together in a forward-facing document for the public that includes that methodology, the recommendations, and any additional information through the process. And then last but not least, of course, is plan adoption. So our intention is to come back to council and make sure to have that plan adopted through your support. Next slide. So this is just a quick overview of that timeline. It's about a 12 to 14-month timeline period. As soon as we receive approval for the contract, we'll be able to get started with staff, begin calendaring various events, working on that public engagement plan, and then bringing us all the way through Phases 1, 2, 3, and 4 to about September of 2026 of next year. So, and I will pass it back to Carla.
Thank you.
So the cost for the master plan is $577,300. And our recommendation is that the city manager to be authorized to sign an agreement for professional services by and between the City of El Paso and HAF for the project known as the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Okay. Representative Chavez?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm very excited to see this initiative because we, it is my understanding we haven't done it in 10 years, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And it really is a pleasure to work with the Parks Department. They have done a phenomenal job in being very responsive to the needs, specifically to my district, and I really appreciate that. There are certain things in this plan, and I know that we're going to get an opportunity to speak with the consultant regarding it. I just want to bring up a few things that are of particular concern to me that I would like to see as part of this plan, especially since we only get to do it every 10 years. As we all know, and especially through the Chime and Survey that we recently conducted at the city, that quality of life is one of the priorities for our constituents, and definitely parks ties directly into the quality of life and, you know, significance in our community. So one of the things that I would like to see is, you know, from my conversations with the Parks and Rec Department, there is currently a ranking system between A and D for playground areas. Something that I would like to see is for that ranking to be extended into the park, to the grass areas, because we don't have a ranking system right now. Is that correct?
Yeah, we don't have, well, we do have it for playgrounds, and that's one of the items included on the scope of work, that we will be doing conditions assessments for some of the parks. And yes, certainly will be evaluating the open green areas that we have on parks.
Yes. And I think that's important because many times, especially when we're trying to budget, you know, for capital improvement projects, we can really only speak to the condition of a playground, you know, in terms of trying to get the ranking improved. But because we don't have a specific system or process in place for the rest of that area, for the grassy areas or other areas of the park, then we can't really, you know, define how to improve those areas because there is no ranking system. So I think that's a very important part of the process, and that's something that I think would be very important to change or improve as we go through this work. The second thing that I would like to focus on is improving our park score from the Trust for Public Land. I know that in the past, we were ranked about 44 in 2014. I think we were ranked 72 in 2024, and I think currently in 2025, we're ranked 65. So I think we are improving, but yet I would like to know how else to improve. And I think EG or Pablo might be able to speak to that. But again, just because of the Quality of Life Initiative being so important for us.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Emilio Gonzalez, Assistant Director for Parks and Recreation. And the change in our relative ranking in the information you cited is really driven by a change in the parameters to what they're measuring. We get higher and lower scores as we compete with larger and smaller cohorts. So in our cohort, the relative movement has been less So in our cohort, uh, the relative movement has been less significant than overall, um, because we continue to do best effort practices to, to en- enhance and sustain what we already have. And then we continue to grow the system so that those variables are part of what drives the, the relative ranking. It, it isn't simply the case that we have fallen off in quality or in terms of, um, maintenance. It is rather that, that the way that it's measured has changed over time. And I can actually, um, give you some analysis of the work I've done with that, to give you some sense of, of how the ranking has changed, how we stand relative to other, um, parks in our cohort, uh, to give you a better sense of what is, we're able to deliver on. One of the chief, uh, mechanisms that we use to make sure that we're actually practicing, um, best practices is to re-accredit with our CAPRA accreditation system, which has gone through that process. I can tell you that 2% or so max of the Parks and Recreation Agencies in the nation have accredited through, um, demonstrating an actual best practices application, uh, on the field. Uh, we are proud to have that for a second five-year term. And part of our commitment to you then would be to assess what we own, enhance what we can, and ask for direction from consultants to be able to maximize the effort that we put forward to deliver a better final product. So our commitment to you is to deliver that information. I will forward it to you.
Thank you, EG. And, and I think, you know, that, you know, my comments today are with that specific intention in mind, to make sure that we provide the support needed for, um, this specific department, only because I think it does tie directly into quality of life for our constituents. We talk a lot about economic development. You know, parks are the first thing that people see when they come to visit our city. They're very visible to, uh, people that visit us. And, and also, it's, it's a, it's a public space that people can, can enjoy. And so we just wanna make sure that all of our parks are, you know, to the standard that our community expects them to be. And these are just suggestions as we move forward with this next 10-year plan, which I'm very excited to see, because, um, it, it's really going to, to guide us to, to make those improvements that are necessary. So I, I appreciate it.
We're sure your enthusiasm. It really is a way for us to be better at what we do now, to deliver, um, better quality over time.
Yes. And, and I know that we've talked, you know, right now about grassy areas, but there are other things, like the playgrounds, which you just briefly mentioned, canopies that continuously tear or are broken, and many times those are no longer, you know, um, you know, with a certain, um, insurance involved in it, so we need to replace them. And all of those are capital improvement projects that we need to make sure that, that are funded, so that we can continue providing those services for our community. So I appreciate it.
A thumbnail sketch of the sort of work coming forward. In order to address turf conditions, uh, it would take drone technology to being able to measure photosynthetic activity, percentages of coverage, density of growth. It's all those sorts of metrics that are out there, that we're gonna reach for to be able to quantify, not just how much of it we have, but the sort of quality that it contains. Um, and that sort of calculations are data-driven and technology-driven, and that's part of applying best practices. That's what we should come forward as the overall master plan event, namely, do the best we can with what we have, ask intelligent requests for additional help, and then prove that we can deliver on those. So that's our commitment to you.
Thank you. That, that's very exciting to know. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And I look forward to this, this initiative. Thank you.
Representative Nino?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Pablo, and to the entire city team for putting this together. I know I've been waiting for this for almost a year since we last talked about it in the last budget. Um, I'm very curious in the community engagement and outreach part of this, uh, initiative. You know, I think it's important to always take into account that we all represent different communities. I know I've mentioned that District Five is the fastest growing, and it's also the newest district in El Paso, have a lot of young families. So sometimes, um, you know, outreach could be very limited to them. It's, you know, please take into consideration if it's a texting campaign or a social media campaign, and also involving us as, you know, the representatives of those districts to really engage. I know the Chime and Survey really gave great results in, in involving all of us. Um, I would really truly appreciate that. You know, District Five, we have 44 parks. A lot of those parks are just either grass or, or grass and dirt. I don't have a lot of amenities. And the 2019, um, the plan of, the plan at El Paso in 2019 identified that the east side of El Paso has a lot of deficiencies in city services, infrastructure, and, um, including the absence of sufficient public amenities in the areas of parks, libraries, public safety services, senior centers, recreation centers, and pools. So I'm very, uh, excited to take, uh, you know, this conversation even further, because I know that District Five is, there's a lot happening in District Five. So, um, I'm very grateful for you all in, in, in taking into that consideration and taking us into account too. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Representative Trejo?
Thank you, Mayor. This is great to be having, uh, start working on the master plan for the city of El Paso and our quality of life. Thank you all for getting this started. I do have a, a few questions regarding the, the master plan. The recommendations that are gonna be, uh, given, is it based off of budget that the city has in plan for improvements for the, for the parks?
I can, can you?
Is it, is there a budget that the recommendations are being based off of? When you, when they're looking at the recommendations, is, are they looking at a certain budget to stay within?
For the master plan?
Hmm.
Yes, the, the total budget for the master plan is $577,000.
That's, okay, so that's the, that's the plan?
Yes.
That's the actual planning of it?
Hmm.
But the, the cost, or are you looking at the overall budget of what it would cost to make those improvements?
Well, that, that's why we need the 12 months to start planning the, the, the actual 10 years.
Is there, is there a budget that's being looked at?
No, we don't have any.
Is this based off of the need?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. How many parks does the city have?
Right now, 334.
334, okay. And then the needs assessments, uh, Representative Nino mentioned a little bit about that. So the needs assessment, are you gonna be reaching out to the different districts to help, uh, gather that information, maybe through community meetings, or how will that take place?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be planning a, a lot of community meetings and, and, and workshops, uh, with you all, uh, to start engaging with the community.
Okay, very, very good.
To get all the feedback from.
Uh, something that I would like to add is, you know, we've had individuals who have asked for big kids, uh, to consider the big kids, so, you know, uh, teenagers, and see what opportunities are there for them there in the park as well. Uh, so I just wanted to make that and bring that forth as, as, as a thought. And then also, uh, it mentions here on your PowerPoint recreational, cultural, educational opportunities. What part of cultural, uh, areas are you looking at?
Well, cultural opportunities, it, it's, it's because we move with, uh, recreation, delivers so many activities such as arts and crafts and all of that. So that's part of the culture. Also, the public art that enhances all of our, uh, city sites, like our recreation centers. So we're pulling all those together for the master plan.
Okay. And then one last thing, uh, to also consider the seniors. So, I, I know you already do, but just wanted to put that out there. You know, the, the seniors have a huge need as well in, in programming and everything that can be offered for them.
Of course.
Thank you so much.
They're a big, big part for this.
Don't forget us big kids, okay? Representative Canales?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I'm really excited about this too. Uh, we're happy to have you onboard, HAF. I think that's, uh, we, we've been waiting for this process for a while, so we're, we're very happy that this will be carried out. I do wanna, I apologize, Mayor, I'm gonna get on my soapbox for just a minute and point out, uh, our inventory of parks has grown and grown and grown and grown. I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding. Uh, I'll look back at 2020, sorry, 2010, we had, uh, approx, around the start of the year, we had approximately 210 parks. Was the number you just said, uh, Pablo, 334 parks?
Yes, sir.
It's like 51% growth in the number of parks that, uh, poor Mr. EG behind you has to maintain. Uh, it's a, it's a lot of parks. And so, uh, as I said, the soapbox I'm regularly on, I'll say, we have to be very conscious of continuing to add to the inventory that's through sprawl, through urban sprawl, um, through the types of parks that we allow in our development. Uh, I hope that this is also part of the, the assessment that's done. Uh, because, uh, if, if we continue to add more and more and more parks to the inventory, the, the population is not growing at the same amount, uh, at the same rate, I should say. And so, uh, we have less resources per park, and it's difficult to have, uh, a 10-year plan for improvement when we're not growing the pool of resources as fast as the pool of parks to maintain.
Yes, sir.
I don't mean for it to be a downer, but that said, I think we're, we're very excited for what's coming in the, in the plan. You know, I helped, uh, in the run-up to 20, to the election in 2022, uh, with packaging the, the request to the council, together with, with Moms On Board, the local community group, uh, the, the request for parks funding in the Community Progress Bond. Uh, and we were very excited about the possibility of, of adding to the parks, and we've seen that happen. I think there's been a great rollout of, of those funds, and we're ready now for a next step, looking at the next 10 years. And so, uh, we charge you with that, and, uh, you too, as well, HAF. And, uh, I look forward to seeing what we develop over the next, what's this, what's the timeline here? Year, one year, 12 months?
12 months.
Over the next 12 months. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Pablo, we're looking forward to this, as you can see. So we're excited.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we have a motion in a second on this. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Prime, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Nino, seconded by alternate Mayor Protem Fierro, and this is to approve the resolution on item 40. On that motion, call for the vote. Thank you. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. Yes, item 41 is discussion and action on a resolution that the city council reappoints Jorge Rivas and Cory Harbor Valdez as part-time associate municipal court judges to save, serve a four-year term from August 9, 2025 through August 9, 2029. They preside over arraignments and serve as magistrates on graveyard shifts.
Representative, second? Representative Canales? Okay. There's a motion, Representative Canales?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I've been very happy with the performance that I've heard, you know, I haven't experienced much of it firsthand, but from, uh, Judge Harbor Valdez and Judge Rivas, I mean, absolutely no disrespect to them, I just wanna ask some questions about the process here, which I, I can recall back to, the last time I can remember, the council made appointments here was in 2021.
Correct.
Um, and I recall a process with applications and interviews. Uh, the council had interviews during a public council meeting, uh, in front of the public. I know that this is different because these aren't vacancies necessarily, they're reappointments of, of incumbents. But I wanted to know if what the process was, what, what the process was for, uh, recommending the, the reappointment of these two judges.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and Bill Casas Municipal Court. Um, there were some changes, and thank you for bringing that up. Um, I actually will be visiting with all of you to explain some of that to you, and hopefully you'll make some time for me to, to provide you with that. Uh, the biggest change, um, Representative, Representative Canales, is that now, um, candidates, anyone who is going to be appointed, um, needs to be, um, actually, any application that we get, uh, that is vetted, um, is, is you're gonna be able to interview all candidates. So, um, there is actually one coming up for a full-time magistrate. Um, and we actually have two. Right now, we have one vacancy. Um, I haven't brought that actually, um, to council yet because of the many things we had, and we wanted to give an opportunity actually to open up the recruitment for any others that might want to, uh, apply for that position. But you'll be seeing a whole list of applicants, so it'll be, um, coming, bringing it to court, to, to all of you. Um, and then, um, we need to vet them to make sure that there isn't anything, of course, going through the backgrounds, but, uh, we'll, I'll go ahead and set up a, probably, um, on a work session, depending on the list that we get. Um, and I'll work with Ms., Ms. Prime to, uh, go ahead and, and schedule it.
Okay, but for this particular one, what was the, what was the process that was followed for making the recommendation?
It's basically, um, the same. Um, they, they, we would go ahead and post a position through HR, um, and whatever list that we actually get, um, those actually positions, uh, before, they were a little different. Um, again, you will, the city council will be provided a list before you would select which ones you wanted to pick and choose to, to actually interview. Now, all, uh, candidates that, um, actually get on, on the list, uh, will actually be come to, coming to you to interview, actually during an actual session.
Okay, but we're being asked to make a reappointment of these two judges today. I don't recall having the opportunity to have interviewed them. I'm asking particularly about these two.
Them? They actually have been reappointed, or the first time they were, they were appointed was in 2013, so it was even prior to my time.
Okay. But there's a recommendation coming to us from municipal court to reappoint these two judges?
Correct.
How is the determination made that these two judges should be reappointed?
I, I don't, I don't have the, that. They usually, this is the, the normal process. Uh, we bring them to council for you to, um, to see if you would like to reappoint at this point. So there's no actual process for this particular.
Okay. Their terms were expiring?
Correct. Uh-huh. So this one actually be, would be starting in August, um, the, the 9th, 2025 to 2029, another four-year term.
Was there any open call for applications for these two positions?
Not for those.
Okay, so the recommendation was just to reappoint the two existing?
Correct.
And that's being made by the municipal court staff, or who's that recommendation coming from?
If I could, Mayor DiAgostino, Deputy City Manager. So historically, that's what it's been on reappointments, is to just bring the names back. They're already in the system. What she was trying to explain is upcoming is the, the new ones, so we'll go through the interview process. But historically, this is how we've done it. We just brought those who were there, the incumbents, and we just brought them in for a renewal.
Okay. That's all then, Mayor. Thank you.
And you've been doing this since 2013?
These particular judges, they were, the first time they were appointed was in 2013.
Okay.
So they've been reappointed, uh, every four years, uh, for terms for, for, since 2013.
Okay. Representative Limon?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it does go back to 2013. I remember distinctly. I have had the opportunity to work both with Jorge Rivas and Cory Harbor Vazquez, Valdez, pardon, and, um, I think that they are really good quality, uh, municipal court judges. I hope that one day, uh, they won't be working a graveyard shift, that they'll be having a different shift. But for right now, that's what it is, and I'm very, very happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Fierro?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm assuming that there's data that shows that they show up to work, they do a good job, and that's why they're being, um, recommended again?
Yes, there's no issue with them. They're very reliable, um, they're great for our community, so whenever we calling them to substitute, they're there.
And, and unlike my colleague here, I hope to one day never to be in their court.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Representative Canales?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would just say, uh, again, for the future, uh, it's, I think, uh, would be fruitful to look at the, the reappointment process. Um, I, just out of fairness to other interested candidates, um, again, I, I today have no problem with reappointing, uh, these two judges. Like everyone else has said, I, from everything that I've heard, they've done a fine job. Uh, and it's not an easy job, being the, you know, they, they're the overnight magistrates. That's not an easy position. And so I appreciate the hard work that they've done. I, I do just think, out of fairness to others, uh, who might be interested in the position, uh, it, it might be worthwhile to open those up in the future and, uh, at least to potentially allow the council to, uh, a little bit more time, maybe a little bit more notice on the, these reappointments, to allow us to, to interview them ahead of a, of a reappointment. But that's something that we can consider into the future. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Prime, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, seeing none, Ms. Prime, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Canales, seconded by alternate Mayor Protem Fierro, to approve the resolution on item 41. On that motion, call for the vote.
Ms. Prime, I think that motion was from Representative Fierro.
I'm sorry, was it Representative Fierro? Well, the Representative, I think Limon made the motion, seconded by alternate Mayor Protem Fierro, to approve item 41. Okay, council, the voting session is open. Voting session is open. Thank you. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
All right, Ms. Bryant, let's take 42.
Yes, sir. Item 42 is discussion in action on a resolution authorizing the city manager designated to sign all documents related to the FY 2024 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant in the amount of $2,545,213, with a cash match of $1,710,929.32, for a total grant amount of $4,256,129.45. The grant period is estimated to be from September 2025 through August 2028.
All right, Ms. Bryant, we have a motion in a second. Chief, sorry, you guys had to wait most of the day to get to your item.
No worries.
You want to tell us a little bit about the grant?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Good afternoon. So this is a resolution for the FY 24 FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant. It's titled the Safer, or excuse me, the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant, also known as the Safer Grant. This grant's going to be utilized to add 21 new positions, entry-level firefighter positions, to help supplement the staffing of New Fire Station 38, which is going to be opening early next year. There is a 25% cash match year one and two, and a 65% in year three, but what that adds up to for a grant award of over $2.5 million in savings for staffing. Overall, the grant has an opportunity of $4.2 million in grant opportunities. So again, this is something that we've historically obtained in FY 15, FY 17, which relates to the FY 17 and FY 23 fiscal years here. The current Safer Grant's going to be closing in the end of FY 26, so this is a great opportunity for us to find alternate sourcing, funding sourcing, to help ensure we're meeting the demand of our community. Any questions?
Fantastic. Any questions for the chief? All right, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Bryant, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by alternate Mayor Protem Fierro, seconded by, I'm not sure, I heard a voice on this site, Mayor Protem Chavez, thank you. And this is to approve item 42. On that motion, call for the vote. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
All right, let's take item 43.
Item 43 is discussion in action on a resolution that the El Paso City Council authorizes the acceptance of an award from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Local Park Grant Program, including a $1.5 million match required from the city for a total of $3 million to develop Phase Two of the 92.4-acre El Paso Eastside Regional Park, which will include sports courts, native landscaping, and irrigation infrastructure.
Representative Nino?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion on this item?
Yes, Mayor, by me.
Yes.
Well, Pablo, I truly want to thank you, and also Gilbert and Ms. Yvette Hernandez. I know that we've been in a lot of conversation of the design for the Eastside Regional Park, which is Phase Two, which will be hopefully breaking ground soon. You know, when we talked about the original design of the park, it was only calling for limited amount of certain amenities, but I know that in conversations, we went back to the drawing board a couple of times, and you all were able to identify potential grants that could help us achieve even adding further amenities to the park. So I'm very grateful for you all and the team, and it's exciting because overall, this is an additional, you know, this is additional funds for the park that won't come directly from the taxpayer or the general fund. So thank you all for all the great work that you guys have done.
Thank you, sir. Representative Canales?
Thank you, Mayor. More for my own curiosity than my opinion about this, but do we, are you able to share what the source of the match is, the 1.5 million match? It says CID, and it has a funding string, but I don't recognize it. Is it, is this 2012 quality, I mean, 2012, 2022 Community Progress Bond funding?
It's, the match is coming from CID. I don't know from which source, but it's coming from CID.
Okay. I just wanted to understand if it's bond-funded or not.
Robert, do you have the?
He's working on it, I can see.
It's going to come from the 2017 CAPRA Improvement Plan.
2017 CIP, okay.
So it's COs, the original.
So it's, yeah, the original COs for the Eastside Regional Park?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Representative Chavez?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to vocalize my support for Representative Nino in this specific agenda item. I think it's really great that you have an opportunity to shape your district, Representative Nino, in a way that's going to be meaningful and very impactful for that community. And it's just, it's just awesome to see it happening in real life, in real time. And so, congratulations.
And we have a motion in a second on this. Ms. Prime, would you call for the vote?
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Nino, seconded by Representative Limon, to approve item 43. On that motion, call for the vote. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
Let's take item 44.
Item 44 is discussion in action on a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a two-year on-call agreement for professional services to perform civil engineering services on a task-by-task basis with the following six consultants: ACOM Technical Services, Inc., CEA Engineering Group, Inc., Consor Engineers LLC, GRV Integrated Engineering Solutions, LLC, Hewitt Zollers, Inc., and Moreno Cardenas, Inc.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion on item 44? Representative Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Gilbert, for the briefing on this last week. Just for public knowledge, I know that the professional services, when it comes to, there is no higher El Paso first, correct?
That is correct. For professional services.
It's just professional services. And so out of these, how many, how many total proposals or bids did you receive?
16.
16? And then out of the six that were awarded, how many are from El Paso?
There's three local headquarters here in El Paso.
So I just want, I had a conversation with Gilbert, and we're looking into the possibility of making professional services part of that higher El Paso first as well. And so I appreciate the conversation, Gilbert, last week, and thank you, Ms. Hernandez, I see you over there, as well, for that conversation to be able to happen. So I just wanted to make sure that I asked those questions today. Thank you, Gilbert.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item 44? Ms. Prime, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Mayor Protem Chavez, seconded by Representative Limon, to approve item 44. On that motion, call for the vote.
Mayor, I'm so sorry.
All right, Representative, hey, Ms. Prime. Representative Canales?
And, sorry to do this, Mayor. It's actually for you. There is a disclosure on the form in the backup.
For campaign donation?
Yes, sir.
From which one? I didn't see it. Not logged out, so.
Can I, can I do it on behalf of the Mayor?
Sure.
Let me pull it up again. I just wanted to make sure you were aware, Mayor. You know, 2,500 CEA Group.
I didn't recognize this company, yeah. So I did receive a campaign contribution from CEA, Ruben Chavez?
Pardon the interruption, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure.
No, that was, I appreciate that, Representative Canales, thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Council, starting the voting? End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. The final item is number 45, and this is discussion in action on a resolution that the city manager designated be authorized to effectuate a budget transfer to utilize investment interest funds to set up the budget for the Cedar Grove Subdivision Improvements Project.
Is there a motion to approve? So, Ms. Prime, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, Ms. Prime, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Madonado Rocha, seconded by Representative Boyar Trejo, to approve item 45. On that motion, call for the vote. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously.
There's a, there's a motion in a second to adjourn, Ms. Prime?
Yes, sir. There's a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor? Anyone opposed? And the city council meeting for Tuesday, August 5, 2025, is adjourned at 1:50 p.m. Council, please remember that there's an off-cycle regular meeting next Tuesday, August 12. So we'll be here in one week, August 12.
All right. Thank you, Council.
Ms. Prime, will that meeting be posted?
That will be posted Thursday. The agenda will be posted Thursday.
Thanks.